Let's open the October 11th, 2022 meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. And I guess first thing, I just want to note is unless you have a problem, Tim, I am going to turn the chair over to you for this entire meeting.
Sir, I'll take it with any help I can get.
All yours.
All right, so first on the list we have is the meeting minutes.
We'll do a poll.
I just, I have one correction. On the public hearings under Hilltop Estates, to make it, we need to, instead of opened, continued.
What do you mean? It says this hearing was continued.
No, it says reopened. Oh, okay.
It was just a caption you're looking at.
Oh, yeah, it's just where it says seven o'clock.
Yep.
In the reopen piece, you're just looking to get that caption, just changed to continuance, started at 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
Because the hearing had been opened since April 12th.
Yeah, yeah, so.
It never closed at any time.
That's it. I didn't, I don't think I had any other, anybody else have any other comments?
No.
Dick, do you have any?
No.
Okay, I got a second. Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote. Yays?
Aye.
Aye.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I gotta do, I gotta do roll call, I apologize. Yep, Mr. Williams?
Who cares?
No, I'm looking for a yea or a nay.
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yea.
Kevin?
Yea.
Norm?
Yea, with an extension to the Hilltop Estates section of the minutes.
And Mr. Narwold, yes, so that's five, zero. All right, for the minutes, that's out of the way. Let's move on to, we can't move on to.
But you can take some other good.
That's what I was gonna do, I was gonna move to, let's move to number, I'm see if we can get this out of the way, number seven, which is the select board, what that is, is the Bryce Lemon Estates administrative function of Phase One and Two street acceptance. The select board has sent us a request for a recommendation on Phase One and Two. I'll take these in order. So Phase One, they, we've got a memo on March 23rd, 2021, the planning board recommended select board that the roads associated with Phase One be accepted, subject to conditions, which was a letter that was attached. Says however, the board of stands at town did not obtain an easement from the developer within the 120-day period. The town has to follow the layout steps again. As a result, the planning board again voted to recommend it on April 12th, 2022. It went to the town meeting and was defeated. So where it's being recommended again, or they're looking, the select board's looking for a recommendation from the planning board for Phase One of Bryce Lemon Estates for street acceptance. So I guess I'm putting that out if there's any discussion from the board on this.
I think I read somewhere that Carl had driven over the roads and was, I don't know, and didn't see any major difficulties in the ones that are coming up to be accepted.
Yeah, Carl, Quinn Engineering, yeah, so Dave asked me to go out, just take a look, look around, basically did a drive, there's nothing seen out of order.
Any different than from two years ago?
From a drive-through perspective.
We've got your report from 2021, when we asked for the final acceptance for the as-built drawings. Ask anybody else? I don't have anything, I've seen these too many times, so.
I think this is with the motion and everything, I don't know when we had the discussion about, you know, making sure that the public, when we go to accept it.
Yes.
At that time, I think we just need to have a better dialogue for the town at the time. We've already approved them once, everybody else said these were proven, we already approved them, we're doing it again, the town needs to know that, you know, this is the process it's supposed to be, and everybody else involved, I mean, it was ignorance that they didn't get approved last time, is that a fair statement?
Yes, and I think, me personally, I'm gonna ask if Mr. Blair would be there to, any questions came up, that he'd be there for his own street acceptance, or representative of his company. So when fee comes tonight, I'm gonna ask for that, just to make sure we don't have to do this again.
Yeah, just make sure that we're prepared.
I guess I will ask, since this is basically a discussion, is there any comments from the audience for Britnall Estates, Phase One? Right, I'm sorry, Bryce Lemon, gosh, thanks, appreciate it. Bryce Lemon Estates, Phase One, which is a street acceptance.
Uh, yes. My name's Sean from 73 Woodside.
All right.
Just a little bit, I had some trouble getting in on the Zoom. Does that include talking about the HOA, or is that a separate?
Separate.
Topic tonight?
Yeah, this is just basically the street acceptance for the town, so they could basically handle it from any maintenance that needs to be done, any plowing, any repairs.
And also to be put on the warrant, I thought.
Yep, and this is to go on the warrant as part of the town to vote on. But the reason we're doing the street acceptance is because of, once it's accepted by the town, they take it over and do all the maintenance. Because legitimately, right now, the HOA, I think, is responsible for that road or the developer, too.
Yeah, it's the developer at this time still. And does that include cleaning up all the construction debris and casings and everything that are still laying around?
On Phase One? On Phase One, do you see any?
There's some retention.
Add to the detention pond.
They're using it as like a staging area, from what I understand. But everything else, the rest of the roads look, look good.
I don't know if that has anything to do with our street acceptance, I mean, that's part of construction. Dave, have you run into this, I mean, I, if it's not on the road or not part of the road development, I'm not sure if it's.
Right, I don't recall it being part of the discussion for the Phase One or Phase Two street acceptance, that that was part of the acceptance.
Correct.
My understanding that that is for acceptance at a later time?
Yes.
By the way, prior planning board phased this project when administered.
Yeah, because the water from Phase, the other phases is still running into there, so it has to stay with it, but the roads don't.
Correct. Sean, did that answer your question? There's still work that's associated with that detention pond and, and other phases?
Yeah, that would just be Phase Two, which is also getting accepted, my understanding.
Isn't there other, there's Phase Four that also feeds that detention pond, too.
Phase Four is on the other side.
Correct.
Of the bridge work, which goes into the first detention pond off of Main Street.
Phase Three, Mr. Chairman, Phase Three comes in off of Main Street?
Yes, Phase Four is the connection, if I'm not mistaken.
Phase Four is gonna be the connection from two to three.
And as the hill comes down, that feeds into the detention ponds we're talking about right now. The other side goes, as it goes over the hill in Phase Four, that goes down to the detention pond in Phase Three.
There's a portion of Phase Four which feeds into that detention pond next to Phase Two.
Sean, did you, yeah, so there's still, Phase Four actually feeds two ways, one to detention pond in Phase Three and into Phase One's detention pond.
I believe it's two ways.
Yeah.
But I know that it definitely goes into the Phase Two detention pond.
Okay, so I guess some of his culverts and laydowns probably still useful, because he's still gotta do Phase Four, which hasn't been done yet.
Okay.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, someone else has a question?
Oh. Uh, Stephen?
Yeah, I think it was, was that you, Tim?
Yes.
Sorry, it was Steve, maintenance, 51 Woodside. I actually talked to Clea a little bit about this the other day. My only question that was to him was, again, really retaining to that retention pond. I don't know if there's supposed to be a sidewalk or anything that connects Phase Two and Phase One in front that should be completed, you know, in order to accept the road. That's, I guess that's my first question, and then the second would be, you know, if, you know, again, I don't understand why it wasn't accepted to begin with, so maybe I'm talking blindly here, but it sounds like it was more of just people were shutting it down, didn't understand the fact that if we don't get this thing approved, that it's gonna be on us to plow or maintain the roads until it's formally accepted, is that correct?
No, what, what happened the first time around is it was accepted, but if I'm not mistaken, paperwork wasn't filed.
With the admin, yeah.
Yeah, in a timely fashion, therefore it had to be rerun through town.
Phase One.
Phase One, that's what we're talking about right now. Phase One, so it had to be re-accepted by the town so the paperwork could be filed.
Got it.
So that was a town administrative mistake, that we're trying to, we tried to rectify last May, it didn't rectify, so we're trying to do this again and get it done.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I think it's in everyone's best interest to get this thing accepted, except I think, I, you know, I understand everyone's concern in the subdivision, which is, you know, maybe not understanding the steps here, but, you know, going through, just, just to make sure that that area in front of the retention pond gets cleaned up and, and it doesn't get skipped over, once he does jump from, you know, finish, you know, Phase Two and then, and then go into Phase Three and Four, so I think that's really, really the biggest concern here, you know, between the folks to live in Phase One and Phase Two, maybe I'm speaking out of, you know.
No, that's fine.
Four people here, but I think that's really the biggest concern here, just because it does, you know, you've got a porta-potty, you've got all that stuff, as Sean had mentioned, but as long as that stuff gets cleaned up, I don't think anyone's gonna have any concerns about getting this thing approved, so.
Clea, what I'd said earlier when you weren't here was, that stuff is, that equipment's still laying there, because you've gotta do.
Yeah.
Tie into Phase Four, and that hasn't happened yet.
Right.
Understood.
That's, that stuff in front of the detention pond is to be used in the detention pond.
For Phase Four's hook-in, correct?
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's an outflow, that's, what is it, are we hearing an outflow, it's just what you need to make, you know, what you need to put in as part of the design for the detention pond. But we can't finish the detention pond, or we could, but it wouldn't make any sense because Phase Four is, uses that detention pond. So if I, if I finish it now, I'm gonna end up doing it over again.
That's what we said, Carl said it earlier, too.
And the sidewalk in front of it, if I gotta run equipment in and out to do the work there, I'll destroy the sidewalk. And that porta-potty should have been out of there, it's cost me a lot of money to leave it there.
No, Clea, Clea, I think.
And it's using, it's bugging me.
I think that's some good points there, I think, you know, if you explain that to the folks here, I think, you know, on the next call, I, I think you're gonna get, I don't think you'll have as much pushback as, as you've had to get this accepted, that's all I'm saying.
I said earlier, Clea, either you or representative needs to be, stay at this meeting for it this time, please.
I've never had that happen before.
Yeah, I know.
When the planning board recommends something, the finance committee recommends something, and the select board recommends something, how would you expect the town to turn it down?
It did, so we're not gonna have it happen again.
All my questions have been answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Mr. Blair?
Yes. At the meeting, I heard, and I wasn't there, so I can't, and I didn't watch it, but I heard that Gary mentioned that there's a way to force us to plow the streets and maintain the streets, and, or bill us, or something to that effect. I, I want everybody to understand, we're finished with that phase, and because we're finished with that phase, there's no line item that says you have to plow and maintain on the tripod agreement. The only money that gets held is for actual work in the street on the road, and everybody's gotta understand that. So I'm done with my part. So it's gonna be up to the whole, if, if for some reason the town doesn't accept it this time, it's gonna be up to the homeowners to have to plow and maintain the road. I'm not gonna do it anymore, I'm done with my work, and again, there's no money, it can't, it's not even legal to withhold money for plowing and sanding, I've already been to court on that with the town of Leicester, and it's not legal to hold money for maintenance. So I think everybody in the subdivision's just gotta turn out and vote it in, I think the people in the town fought that because it wasn't finished, the whole subdivision wasn't finished, that they didn't want to accept it, and they gotta realize that this is done in phases, not in, not, you don't do the whole subdivision and then get it approved.
Tried that once, it didn't work out.
I know, that's what, but I want everybody to understand that, if for some reason we don't, if the town doesn't take it, then they have to do it themselves.
Well, the town took it once, we administrated, they didn't file the paperwork, so.
Right, but not Phase Two.
We're not there yet, we're on Phase One. So I guess, if there's no other comments from the public and the board, I guess I will call for a motion.
Sorry. I did have one question. Okay, Caroline, 59 Woodside, I just have a question, so, yeah, I live on 59, we have Lemon Circle, which is behind us, and you notice there's been some clearing and everything, it's starting to get prepared for Phase Five behind us, but we've also noticed that there has been, because there has been some vehicles accessing the back behind us, that it has left some damage on the road, so I'm just kind of curious, it hasn't been, it's not much, but there have been marks damaged to the, you know, just kind of the side beams, I'm sorry, the trim on the side of the road there, so I'm just kind of curious if, if there is acceptance to Phase One, if in Phase Five continues to get, proceed with construction and removal, if there is damage to the road because of the trucks coming in and out, how will that affect it to Phase One?
Required to fix it.
Required to fix it, okay, thank you.
Don't, don't think Joe would ever let that go.
And just for your knowledge, typically after a road's accepted, the town holds on to a small portion of fee for 12 months, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
And then that's part of the bond, the last portion of the bond, so if there isn't any damage or anything within that 12 months, we ask the developer to fix it, and then if they don't, we can delve into that bond. I don't think the town's ever had to do that, but I'm not as experienced, okay, I, I yield to the experience who says we've done it once and that's it. There's a lot of roads that have been built in town, so one time is not a large, and with this developer, the answer is not, that I can recall, we've ever had to do that, so. So if that's it, I'll take a motion to recommend Phase One street acceptance, and there should be, I don't have the, let me get Churna Kill in a quick sec. From, uh, Dave, I can't read this.
I think.
From 50, 0, 0 to.
From one end to the other on the Phase One.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to say Phase One.
That's fine, I think we do have the plans of record that are part of this packet.
Okay.
There is clear as to what we're talking about, so I'll just reference those plans in the, in the final, final document to this.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I will do a roll call. Mr. Jarvie?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
And Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
And Mr. Narwold, aye, five, zero. So Dave, do you have to write a letter?
Pardon me, before I get to that, did you take Phase Two?
Nope, that's next, I just wanna make sure we get Phase One.
So what we're gonna do is, we have a draft letter already developed that indicates what this board's action is tonight, that'll be transmitted to the select board's office by Thursday at 12 noon, or some designated time, but it'll be delivered on time.
We're a little bit into the hearing, but I'd like to get Phase Two out of the way if we could, before we move on. So I guess I will ask if the board has any comments for Bryce Lemon, Phase Two street acceptance, Woodside Ave, from Station 35 plus 50 to Station 27 plus 0, and Oakley Drive, Station 00 to 2 plus 60. I think, just a quick background, we recommended this last year for the main town meeting in May? May. And the select board received our recommendation during the meeting, the FICOM recommended, the select board recommended, and of course, our recommendation was yes, and the town voted it down. So again, any comments from the board on Bryce Lemon, two other than, I like Kevin's previous one, that was, we need to, if any questions come up, we've gotta jump on them and make sure, if we can't answer them and there's a question for the developer, Mr. Blair's there, we refer to him for any answers.
I'm in.
So.
Nothing changed?
Same.
Yeah, okay. I will go to the public, any comments from the public for Phase Two? Seeing none, I will tender a motion.
Make a motion to accept Phase Two, as described.
All right, we've got a second, any discussion? All right, let's go with a vote, Kevin?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Tim, aye, five, zero. Those two recommendations we can send to the select board for their warrant article. All right, let's get back in order, and we've gotta go to Hilltop Estate, number two. And for the public's knowledge, this is a continuation of a hearing from September 27th, which, this hearing was started on April 12th of this year, and we're just, again, continuing it to get more information about this, let me find my, now it's like six, oh, that's done, that's done.
What if I make a motion to continue it next year?
I'm not sure I wanna do that.
Just like every other meeting.
Give me a quick sec. I'm missing, oh, it's in something, I apologize, number two. We've got comments from Quinn Engineering, that's dated October 7th, had 49 comments. Have those, Clea, you had a chance to look those over and get them back?
Well, we got it on October 7th.
Okay.
And there was a weekend in between and a holiday, so no, but I have a lot of, I think it's important, because a lot of the stuff is really dependent on you guys and where, where it falls, in your purview. I, I wanna go through this, like, almost line by line, and, because Carl's here and he can kind of explain what he said, and, and what we're doing, I can explain, and, you know.
Okay.
So if I, if I could start, I just wanna say, in reality, I'm really just designing a driveway. Now, here's, here's where I wanna, I have, what is it, 13 approved lots at that site, and 13 approved driveways off of Britnall Drive.
Correct.
Each driveway is approximately 12 feet wide, and some of them, one of them is over 1,000 feet, some of them are very steep, I know, I know you have to stay within 8% when the roadway easement, but past that, you can, you can rise it up, and then you got, you've got other driveways at a 500, 600, so the dri, I just wanna preface this by saying, if I built these as individual lots, they'd be a whole lot more impervious than there is with that one road, 1,000 feet long, 18 feet wide. So what I'm getting at is, I'm really just designing a driveway, and I'm trying to get as close to standards that the planning board will accept, that I can. So the first thing I wanna talk about, if I could, if we could just take this out of order a little bit, is stormwater management.
Okay.
So if I'm not, I, my understanding of stormwater management is that you trigger it by being within 100 feet of a wetland.
Right after all the drawings.
You listening to me?
I'm trying to get.
I'm gonna wait.
Yeah, wait a second, because I wanna make sure everybody's, because we gotta get to the Quinn report and then get to the third page.
Okay.
Which is stormwater management, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Make sure the board's looking at this, so as you talk.
So to be fair, some of the stormwater comments come up on the first page, just you're not flipping to the first, third page.
Uh.
Just because they were like, sort of.
Oh, with the country drainage, I see that detention pond, all right?
Right.
I guess we'll look at page one and three at the same time. Okay, go ahead, Clea, I'm sorry.
First of all, the stuff that, on page one, I agree with Carl, the stuff coming down the hill needs to be put into structures, catch basins at the bottom of that hill, piped across and down the hill onto that lot that'll be on across the street, and maybe a basin built down there, maybe. But the point that I'm trying to get at is, with stormwater management, there's, there's two triggers that I'm aware of for stormwater management to, to apply. One, you have to build within 100 feet of a wetland, and two, you have to create new lots. Those two things aren't happening here. So what I'm trying to do is build a driveway and get as close to complying as I can. I mean, Carl did his job, and he did it well, he, he went through this thing and applied it to the Stormwater Management Handbook and their rules and regs, and I agree with his comments, and they can all be solved. However, I'm saying that they don't need to be, the biggest thing that we try to do on this site is stop the water from coming down those driveways onto the road, onto Britnall Drive, and eroding out Britnall Drive, because you can't pave it, you can't put drainage in it, you can't do any of that stuff because it's a historic road, so by removing all of those individual driveways, making this one driveway for these lots, it creates a lot better situation. There's actually two, maybe three detention, we're gonna eliminate that detention pond at the bottom if we put the catch basins in, right? Probably have to take, probably be able to take that out of there, maybe not, but there's three detention ponds right now designed on that site, and they're big. So with the country drainage up above, you got, you got a four percent, pretty much a 4%, it's pretty flat up above, it's just getting up to it that creates that 11% grade, and we, we talked about that way at the beginning of this whole thing, that, that was gonna be there. So if we put catch basins in and we get this thing so that it, the water's not gonna run out into the street, then I, that's what we've really, that was our intention. So a lot of the stormwater management comments, recharge, treatment, things like that, I didn't comply with completely, because I'm not really bound to do that, because I'm not creating lots and I'm not within 100 feet of a wetland. So we're close, but it's not perfect, and, so I, I wanna say that upfront, I don't know that, I don't know that I even need to ask for a waiver from it, but I'm trying to, to get it as, as close to a road and have it still be a driveway as I can. So I don't feel it necessary to comply with a lot of that stuff, and I, so I, I put that to the board now, but the other things, I mean, as far as, you know, the subdivision regulations and, and things like that, I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing that at all, we have to, there's some stuff we ought to do, the rounding easements in, in number four, so I don't mean to get off track, that's my, that's my take on the subdivision, on the stormwater management, do you wanna discuss that now, or?
Yeah, I was going to, before Carl says anything, again, I'm going to ask the rest of the board. I think the lots are changing because of subdivision, it's not a special permit, individual driveway anymore. You've got to follow underneath the subdivision rules and regs of the town. I thought the attorneys already had said that in the letter, if I'm not mistaken.
It's not?
That is my understanding of their opinion on this matter.
So, let me just comment on that.
No, that's fine.
So, my other alternative is sell off the twelve lots-
Yeah.
-and build individual driveways. So, this is a much better alternative. That's why I come to the board. I think the attorney is wrong, that, so, so what she's saying here is, I'm putting a thousand-foot-long road in, why don't I just cut it up into lots and put twenty lots there? So, I'm doing this in this fashion so I don't have to comply to, to their, to your, all of your regulations, because it really is a driveway. You don't have a regulation that allows me to put in a thousand-foot-long common driveway. I can't do it.
Mm-hmm.
And in order to get that approved, you guys can't even waive it. I got to go to the ZBA.
Yeah.
So I'm here, trying to put a drive, really just a driveway in to service these lots. Those lots are already created. I'm not changing them. They're created. So, if I was to build this as a subdivision road and make all those lots, make, I would get more than seven or eight lots, whatever there is on that street itself, I'd get way more than that. So, there's a give and take here. Rather than put in all those driveways and do all of those different things that I would have to do if they were individual lots, I'm trying to just build one driveway. So that's really what I'm getting at, through this.
Carl?
So just, so you guys know, I reviewed it with respect to subdivision rules and regulations.
Yep.
Because that's what I was asked to do, so. If you go through the subdivision rules and regulations, there's language in there about complying with stormwater management, the current version, so if, if you're not going to comply, and you guys are okay with it, for whatever reason, then probably you does need to ask for a waiver, just to establish that it is a requirement, but you're not making them do it.
I'm not going to be on the only one on this board talking, so somebody else say something. Norm, jump in too anytime you want.
I thought stormwater management, it's DPW. What's his opinion?
Ah, he's not here, that's, he couldn't be here, that's why, we're not, in my opinion, we're not done with this hearing tonight, because I need, I need Director Buckley's comments, and unfortunately, he hasn't had a chance, Carl, to go through your comments, so I really need his feedback on that. But, I was looking for some feedback on the subdivision, not being a subdivision, but being a driveway. Thoughts on that? I mean, I've got mine, but I want to hear everybody else's. And don't get excited.
I will not sign off on it. I don't like the idea that the road is how it's laid out.
Okay. Marilyn?
I'm wondering if I can, so this is, just to make sure, I know this is currently what we're trying to do.
I can't see it, Kevin.
I just want to make sure, what's currently approved was, I know of a bunch of lots, and this is what you're trying to do now.
This is what's currently approved, right here.
This has already been approved?
Right here, yeah.
And then what's it changing to?
To just a thousand-foot road, right here. None of these driveways, all of these-
I thought the lots were different. Am I wrong?
So I'm going to have a driveway here anyway to service this lot. Now, I made it a rightaway, I made it a thousand feet long, and I eliminated all these other driveways, all of them.
That's what I'm saying, I assume.
Thanks, okay.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Seven.
Seven.
Eight, nine.
I didn't see driveways there.
There's not driveways, but there's houses there, those are lots.
Those are-
And they're being serviced from this now.
From the road to the cul-de-sac, and then there's a driveway off of that to go up?
Yeah.
So that's a driveway.
And then this one serviced off of it, this one serviced off of it.
To be classified as a private ways, just like the rest of it.
So this house is not going to go there?
Yeah.
I want the chief here, or the director, I call him chief, but-
So can that go to that?
Yeah.
There are two that come up that cul-de-sac to go further up.
Well, it just, it just gives a neat connection to here.
So what, do you need that?
It's already approved.
As part of that lot?
It's already approved.
Well, I understand that, but it's not going to be, because we're changing it, so it's a new approval, right?
No. Actually, those lots aren't going to change a bit.
So you have coming off of this road, um, uh-
Yeah.
How many numbers, houses, is it? That are actually coming off that road?
It's legal.
Nine.
Nine off of there. I was trying to count on myself today.
I get eight houses there, on that?
There's one down there, Dick, see that, that little, that's what Kevin was asking last time, is to get a drawing so we could see the, did you send?
Yeah, we got to work. So you got two off the top of the cul-de-sac.
Yes.
And then another two, that's four, five, six, seven, eight. I count eight.
No, there's nine.
There's one that's off the page.
You can't see them down the bottom?
That locus on the bottom?
That's, that's a lot. That's a house.
So, you take a driveway off a cul-de-sac, that's probably half the distance of the hilltop road, hilltop drive road, and go out to a house in the back. That's that zigzagging property that came off of Brittenell that you were just showing me, Kevin? There's a house back here, off the cul-de-sac. Because the cul-de-sac has, I'm guessing, there's a couple hundred feet driveway, comes off the cul-de-sac and goes back to that little box section, which is an extension of that, of the property up, up on the right side of the map. And I think that's your ninth one, Dick, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, it is.
So-
So, to that house, is how many feet?
I thought I was kind of wondering. Where, do we know where the house placements are going to be on these lots?
Yeah, we've drawn every one of them on there.
Yeah, I just take this drawing, so. And then these lots come all the way back out here now.
Yeah, but they, you're only using the very edge of them, you know? This, think of the trees that I have to cut down to build those houses individually off that street, if I did it as individual lots, that are already approved, already have special permits, already ready to go.
That's better.
What's that?
No, you're not. From, you're driving down the road and see four hundred houses in front of you, and obviously those houses are-
Yeah, well, the cul-de-sac was going to put them, or I should say the cul-de-sac, but these right here, oh, you're saying this one with all of them back here?
That's just my-
No, no, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Nice of lots. I feel like you're wasting laser.
Yeah.
Norm, any comments?
Actually, Norm has recused himself.
Oh, that's right, I apologize. I said, Norm, don't say a word.
Tim, you're in charge.
Yeah, no, I keep forgetting that, yeah, that I got to keep him out of this, so there's no, uh.
I think I personally need more information on exactly where this water is coming off of this and how it's going to avoid running across Brittenell Drive, particularly in any time of year, but particularly in the winter when it could freeze.
And that's part of your stormwater report, if I'm not mistaken, correct, that I read?
So, yeah, Chairman, the, it's really, the biggest concern here is the runoff going down the hill, like, directly into the road. So, from the bottom of the driveway, it goes out the road, but then there's also a detention basin at the bottom, with a pipe that discharges to the, basically the gutter of the road, on the high side, so. There's no pipe there now, and there's going to be a twelve-inch pipe that discharges a good amount of water, and it's, there's already a problem.
Okay.
Putting a pipe with more water is going to make it worse. So like Cleve was saying, if they can get the water across the road, that's, that's good for everybody there.
We already maintain an easement on that lot that we own, so that water can, we'll put two catch basins down the bottom of that to catch the water, come up, and then go down Lot 13, and that, that will stop the water from coming into the road.
Into the road.
Can, and the board, is there any chance that we could get something so we can get it in Carl's hands, or is that?
Oh yeah, no, we're doing that, we're going to fix it.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'd really like him to take a look at that.
Oh yeah.
Because that will offset some of these comments on the report.
So, think about that from this standpoint, that's eighteen feet wide, and every one of those other driveways that come down off of Brittenell Drive are twelve feet wide. Now, they're still, it's still steep all along the side of the road there, so every one of them is going to come down and go right up into Brittenell Drive. This way I can control all the water from all those lots in one spot. That's why I'm doing it this way. It's better, it's a better design, it's better for everybody. But, I'm only really building a driveway.
Yeah, I can't agree to that, because our attorney's giving us the advice.
Yeah, but you can't, who listens to attorneys? First of all, second of all, let me just say this, okay? If I came in here, and I said this in my, in my email, if I came in here with, just with a rightaway and a lot on one side and a lot on the other side, that's all, that's all I need to do. I don't have to show you lots. I don't have to, you guys, your charge is the safety of the ways, period. It's not the lots, it's the building inspector, that's the zoning enforcement officer. If I can't get a building permit on that, what good is it? So if she's telling me the lots aren't legal-
Yeah, but subdivision control is our responsibility.
Right, that's the world. Look at the road, forget about the lots.
The road is wrong anyways, so when are you going to take it back and fix it?
The road is wrong.
We're getting there. I don't want to, I don't want to jump out, I want to get the stormwater taken care of, and then we're going to get to the road and the safety issue.
Can't take care of the stormwater until Mr. Buckley gets involved.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to get that update for what you're planning to do across, get that to Carl. And also, I need Dave to get to Director Buckley, so the next meeting that we have, we can have all of the prevalent parties here and try to get at least a stormwater section answered.
Hopefully before we get involved.
Yeah. Any, any other comments from the board on the stormwater section, before we move on?
I was interested in the big detention pond there and some of Carl's comments concerning the water table, as well as the water that you would be putting in there, and the drainage on that.
It's probably easier for Carl to see it.
Sure.
Go ahead, Carl.
Which detention pond are you talking about?
Which one?
The large one on the, the top of the road.
On the top of the page right there?
Pardon?
On the top of the page, right there?
Yes, right there.
Yeah, sure, so, there's actually one on the top, there's one on the bottom as well. And the idea there is, if you can, can you mind if I just point at the screen?
Yeah, Carl, step in. Get you a laser pointer next time.
That's fine, so. There's a swale here, that's pond, swale there, that's pond. And so the, the road basically goes right up the ridge of the hill, and water on the side goes there, water on that side goes there, so those, this thing just conveys the water to the detention basin. Water hangs out in the basin, gets released at a slower rate, and then flows down the hill.
You said something about the, at certain times of the year, the water table would be higher than, which would mean the water that was collecting in there could be higher than the pond.
They did one test pit at the bottom of the hill, the water table was, I don't remember what it was, it was like around four feet or so. But these basins are like, more than four feet into the ground. So at some point of the year, it's reasonable to think that the water table's going to be higher than the floor of the basin, so the basins will have water seeping into them. So for example, the detention basin at the bottom of the hill, next to the road, there'd be a constant trickle of water coming out of that pipe along the side of the road, and so, um-
It'd be taking care of the water table, basically.
You'd basically just be moving it from underground to the side of the road.
Correct, yeah.
So, just one more reason, if you can move that pipe and discharge it on the other side of the road, where it's not going to impact the gutter, that's all the better. The other ones, the other two basins that are sort of up the hill further, those just sort of discharge what looks like into the woods, and eventually flow down to a wetland.
Oh, okay.
So I don't, I don't think it's going to impact the roadway, it's the one at the bottom that's concerned.
I was picturing, that you were speaking about the one pond, so it's the same kind of-
Yeah, I think you guys commented before about having a plan that shows sort of where things are in relation to everything else would be helpful, because it is-
A larger size plan, yeah.
Sort of piece it together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're correct, and it would be useful.
Go ahead, Dick.
Carl, tell me, with the elevation coming up from Brittenell up to the catch basin, at what angle is that?
The roadway?
Yeah, from the roadway up to the thing. If you, if you took an angle coming up and now-
The top basin?
To the catch, to the lower part of the catch basin.
Yep.
And now you've got all these upgrades for the detention pond itself, what the heck are you going to have for a angle?
I don't know, Cleve, can you answer that?
Is it, is it going to be enough to wash away?
Three hundred feet to the top of the curve, right? If it's eleven and a half percent, every hundred feet, it goes up eleven feet. So it's thirty-three feet up, and it's three hundred feet long, and I don't know what the angle is, but it's not that big. Most towns allow ten percent roadway grade. I'm asking for one and a half percent more than that. Rutland is more strict, they don't want any more than eight percent.
No, I'm not referring to the road, I'm referring to the bank and, you already have a bank and going up there, it's steep going up there.
It is.
And now you're putting another steeper bank on, on top of it.
No, I'm cutting into it.
He's cutting into it.
So the bank's like this, and then he cuts down into it, so it's almost like a hilltop.
So those are, those are dropping down into the thing?
Yes, yes.
Not, not creating a detention pond?
I had to look at that too, Dick.
We're not building up shoulders, no, no, no.
Henceforth-
Cutting into it.
Henceforth what Kevin was saying about a larger piece of, uh-
Yeah, we need that.
-paper to look at.
When I first looked at it, I thought we were creating a mountain, instead we've got the angle, then it comes down.
All right, thank you.
So the peak of the mountain's up here, then you come down into the detention pond.
I think when I was looking at it, as you're getting into like the good section of the slope there, it's like an eight-foot cut coming up the hill.
Okay.
So it's a pretty good-sized cut.
If it was eight percent, it would be thirteen or twenty feet, something like that, cut. And I think, you know, I think you'd have to build walls there or something, I mean, or you'd have to cut it back so far. It, it, that's why I'm, you know, that's why I'm asking for a waiver to that.
All right, any, I guess I'll ask from the public, any stormwater questions? I don't think this, this report was in the packet, so.
Actually, it was in the packet.
Yep, this report was.
It's always, yep.
Yep. So any questions from the public? I don't see any hands. So, what I'd like to do is move back to the, I guess, I'll call it the beginning, which was the first night, the first nineteen comments, we want to go through those, because I know some of them are stormwater. Do we want to walk through these, or do we, um?
I prefer to walk through them if you don't mind.
Sure, we got Carl here. And if, if the board thinks that any of these need to be deferred to Director Buckley down the road, please speak up, and we'll circle it, and that'll be one of the discussion points for Director Buckley when he comes in next meeting. All right, I think number one with the country drainage?
Up above, I mean, we don't need to read these questions, you guys can read them, right? I mean, so, what I'm looking at there is, we want to leave the country drainage in up above, but when we get to the bottom, where there's an eleven percent grade, we'll put catch basins, we'll put structures, and we'll pipe across the street, so that it deals with the water coming down off that hill. That, that will solve probably a good portion of these comments.
What I don't like to see is it doesn't meet criteria in the subdivision, so.
None of it does.
I know, that's, that's, that's my biggest problem right now.
Yeah, but, I'll think about it from where I'm coming from.
I do, I, I see, I see what you're trying to do, it's just, me personally, I've got advice from attorney, and I'm going to follow it, that's just me, I'm pretty, I'm pretty basic.
So tell me now, if you're not going to, if you're not, if you guys don't like this, I'm withdrawing. I'm not going to screw around. I'm doing this, this, I think it's a better deal for, I have eleven, thirteen approved I'm doing this, I think it's a better deal for, I have eleven, thirteen approved lots in that area.
With special permits for...
And I have all the special permits. I'm just gonna go build the houses and be done with it. I've been dealing with this, like you said, since April.
Yeah.
You know, if you're not for it, tell me now so I can withdraw it. See you later, I'll go build houses, which is what I do.
Yep.
Some attorney's gonna tell you that it's bullshit. That's what I'm getting at. You know, they can find ways of negating anything.
Yep. But I remember George even saying that he didn't agree with that.
He didn't agree with it being an easement.
Okay.
So he made it a right-of-way. Now it's a subdivision, now I'm dealing with all this crap.
I guess I'll walk around the board. What's thoughts about Clea's comment?
I mean, I don't want to waste your time. I feel like there's a lot to this to get around. You know, the stormwater management, the subdivision rules and regulations, the changes. I mean, in my personal opinion, what you already had approved, take the driveways out of it. I like the lots better. I think they're better, you know, I think people would prefer...
They're not changing them.
Well, the houses are all different. If you have your, you bring your, what you did with that cul-de-sac, because now you've got nine houses within, they're right next, they're all right, and then you've got twenty acres behind every house. I'd rather have the houses in the back part of the lots, you know, so...
And that's the approved.
And that's the approved one. That's how I look at it. I didn't even sign this one, but I was probably more likely to sign this one than I would that one.
The subdivision one.
The subdivision one.
Marilyn?
I wasn't too too happy with either plan, but there... And I'm not always saying that the lawyer's opinions are definitely right, but... So I'm still on the fence with this, I'm not too happy with much of it.
Dick?
I'm not in favor of this because of the fact that there is no leveling area, no place to get away from that eleven-degree pitch in this thing. And not only that, the drawing on the plan for current says eighteen-foot, and our subdivision rules and regulations was changed to twenty.
You're wrong here, Dick, it needs the regs. Read Carl's report, it says it right in it.
Well, I...
It needs the reg.
Because of, over an Irish lane, off an Irish lane for current law, we had eighteen-foot roads, and we had to come back and everybody was upset with it. We changed it to twenty-foot. Norm, didn't we change it to twenty-foot?
He can't talk.
Yes, he can talk about twenty-foot versus eighteen-foot on subdivision rules and regulations.
Yeah, Norm, or anybody, Dave, I'll even ask. I don't have a copy of her.
Ask Carl.
Carl, go ahead.
I have a copy. So for residential access roads serving no more than twenty homes, the minimum pavement width is eighteen feet. That's what's listed on the website, is where I pulled it from.
That's gotta be the latest and greatest, I would hope.
Just to correct you, there is a leveling area, Dick. It's not fifty feet, it's like thirty feet, but there is a leveling area down the bottom, and it actually goes down and then up.
It comes straight down.
Yeah, but then it levels up.
There's no dip, though, it's just...
Straight out?
Straight out, yeah.
Did we not change it, Norm?
Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted, sir, good.
At one time, we did allow eighteen-foot wide roadways in open space subdivisions that I believe was eliminated, and twenty-two feet is required.
That's on the open space, correct, not on the standard subdivision?
I believe it also holds true for a standard subdivision.
Okay, let me see what I got here. Do this mess that I call a filing system. This is probably sitting at home, I don't have... Nope, I'll get... It's at home. It's at home.
So all I can tell you is the Section Six on the website.
What do you have at the bottom of that, Carl, for a date? Does it show a date at the bottom?
It does not.
You don't have the most current regs on the website?
I don't control, I don't control the website, I won't comment on that.
And the review guys looking at, I mean, come on.
There's a town administrator, you can talk to him about the website. Planning board doesn't control the website.
And the most current regs are on the website.
They are, okay.
So it's right.
Then I'm confused, all right.
I would like to hear more about the whole idea of the fire chief's pond.
I was getting that, I wanted to get to Dick's comment, and then I've got his. One of my comments, sum up now, is I read the fire chief's report on his comments on this, and it really caused me a little bit of grief on the safety side. So since the chief's here, I would more than happy if he would be more eloquent than I am with fire regulations and fire requirements, especially for vehicles.
So the big concern, through the CHS, like fire chief, the biggest concern we would have for a common driveway, whatever you want to call this, getting in would be access from the dirt road onto this paved road and up the hill. Our biggest truck that we would ever need would be a laddered truck, obviously, at forty-five feet long. So you would need to be able to swing a large piece of apparatus into the throat or, you know, the mouth of the driveway would have to be wide enough to accept the turn in. Fire apparatuses by NSCA are required to have an eight percent approach angle and departure angle. So that's the clearance from your front axle, center of the front axle to the front pumper, you can't exceed an eight percent grade. Now, obviously, the truck can pull a greater grade than that. It's just that from the zero mark going up, it can't go from zero to eleven percent all at once. It's gotta be flat and gradually climb. Otherwise, you'll be dragging, the overhang, at a hundred and fifty-four inches of overhang on the rear would be dragging. So we want to make sure that the apparatus will be able to pull in and pull that grade. Once it's at the top, the turnaround area would have to be large enough to be able to safely turn this piece of apparatus around in the turnaround. We would never, ever want to back down this road in inclement weather. So obviously, the turnaround at the top would have to be large enough where they're... And they gave a turning radius report, so the engineer can see it, that what we're looking at. And we're not expecting a, you know, I don't want to do a ten-point turn, you know. A three-point turn would be fine. I don't expect to do the whole turn without backing. But we should be able to do, you know, a ninety, probably a seventy-five percent swing, back up, and then pull straight down. That's the concern as far as getting the apparatus up. Eleven percent grade, the only issue we would have during that is inclement weather. Now, if this is going to be a homeowners association, they would be responsible for care and maintenance during, you know, inclement weather. So my only concern is I would just want the homeowners group to understand that if they do not maintain it, we are not guaranteeing service. That would be our only caution to that. The other issue we would have as far as fire protection, there are hydrant locations within both the dirt section and going up the hill. The locations are fine, we have no issues with the locations. The only thing that we would ask, that there would be a flow test done at the very last hydrant at the top that would exceed five hundred gallons per minute without a residual static pressure. So that would be the only concern. And I know it's very difficult just due to the elevation coming down grizzly and everything, up over the hill and back down. So that would be the only concern, because now you're going back up another hill. So those are the big concerns that my department has.
Okay. Marilyn, does that answer, or you got a question?
You were speaking about the laddered truck, which is, I believe, would be your biggest...
Yes.
The ones say that they usually go to fire, would they be able to maneuver that area, that driveway?
Again, I didn't really see the... Once you're on the road, pulling into individual driveways is usually not an issue. It's just being able to turn it from the dirt section of the road into that would need... The width would have to be greater than eighteen feet at the very end, at the opening.
For those of you in trucks.
Yes, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
So first of all, we can comply with all, because there's roundings at the edge of the road that we have, so we can comply with those. We didn't show on the plan, but they do exist, the easements. And then the top of the road is the same size as a standard cul-de-sac, so that would work.
Yep.
The five hundred gallons a minute, you guys have suction? So in other words, I can just design it for the volume, not the pressure?
Correct, we would have to be able to, now, that's a whole other issue. Technically, we're not supposed to be drafting from a hydrant source. We're supposed to be receiving.
Right.
You know, the problem with drafting from a pressurized hydrant source is now you're turning it into a negative pressure main, and you could potentially collapse, you know, weaker systems down the line. So that would be the only...
One way to go to get to a weaker system there, though.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, I don't want to be pulling water out of people's...
I get it, but I mean...
...verses. That would be the only concern.
I got you. But, okay, so I mean, but if we designed it to five hundred gallons a minute, it would pretty much...
Yeah, because any size house you would build, twenty-five hundred square foot or more, NSCA requirement would be the minimum is five hundred gallons would be required.
So all we read through his comments, we can meet his comments.
The eight percent grade.
The eight percent grade, no, it needs a leveling area. So if we have a leveling area right now of twenty-eight feet or something like that, we'll have, we can cut it. The reason we did that was to keep the pitch of the road. So now if we cut it in deeper, you're gonna, it might increase the pitch. So we're gonna have to have a bigger cut on the side.
It'll be a deeper cut at the beginning to get that truck in.
Yep.
So it's just...
Okay.
We can make that comply.
Okay.
Okay.
Dick? I know, I can read your eyes like I was at a bar.
The other thing I'd like to say too here is, if you have eleven individual driveways, they're all gonna be more than eleven percent, number one. And they're not gonna have roundings, and they're not gonna have, he's gonna have one hell of a time getting into each one of those driveways. This is a much safer situation than what would be if those houses, that individual driveway's going to every one of them. And if I gotta do that, I'm not gonna put in water lines and sewer lines, so I'm gonna put septic and wells. So you're not gonna have hydrants anyway. It's just so much better for everybody. And also, it's a private way. Town doesn't have to maintain it, town doesn't have to plow it, any of that. So it's just, I don't know, I think it was, we talked about it a lot before I even came in. I thought you guys were for it. And because some attorney poo-pooed it, that's her job.
No, her job's to protect us, the town.
It's not protecting, how is that protecting it? Every single thing she said...
It doesn't follow rules and regulations, it protects it.
What I'm saying to you is, those lots already exist. They already exist. So if you don't get this, you get that. So what she's saying has nothing to do with this concept. She's saying the lots don't, I can make the lots meet, how is that gonna be? So it's just, it's crazy to do it where they already exist and make everything change on that end. It just doesn't make any sense to me. The lots exist. If I came in with this right-of-way and didn't show any lots, I don't have to. I don't have to show any lots. So don't focus on what she's saying. If you do, it's gonna, you're gonna turn down a good situation...
If you came, let me play devil's advocate here. If you came in with this lots in right-of-way, it wouldn't be a private road, it would be a town road.
Exactly.
And then it's gotta comply.
Good.
Well, then it's gotta be eight percent.
Then you get twenty houses, and you get a thirty-foot cut on each side of the road. It happened, I mean, if you don't think I can build that, test me. Because I can build it, and I can have it meet subdivision, which is what I do every day for the last forty years. So I know I can build a subdivision there, and I can design a subdivision there. The purpose of this wasn't to do that.
Okay.
So, and we talked about it before I went in and did this, that this would be the way. It's basically because you don't, I can't put common driveways and make them comply with the rules and regs, I'm building a driveway. It's basically just a driveway, but it controls the water coming off, it gives it more safety, it puts water lines in, it puts sewer lines in, it does a lot of stuff for the town, and the town doesn't have to maintain any of it, it's all private. It's just a much better situation for everybody involved. And I can't see where it hurts, or, it's not like, you make it like I'm trying to break the rules, or I'm not, I told you what I was doing before I came in and did it. And this, in my opinion, and I know that if you just sit down and think about it for more than a minute, this is a better deal for everybody involved, especially the town, than having all those individual driveways coming off and running into the street and dealing with it like that. And there's driveways there now.
Clea, I know from my perspective, I love the rest of the board talk. I just got this report like you did on Friday. I haven't had a chance to digest anything. And I gotta tell you, I didn't work on this this weekend.
Neither did I.
So I would really like, and this is, I'll ask the board this, I'd like to take until the next meeting to digest this. Also, Carl's done a great job. And I also need Director, me personally, I'll ask the rest of the board what they need, what Director Buckley's comments. I mean, we've got Chief Knight's reports or comments, and I like them, but I just, I want to get the whole picture before we really move on. Mainly, Clea, for your perspective, because right now, me personally, I've got bits and pieces of this. I don't have the whole picture. And I'd really like to give my hands to what Kevin said, on a bigger drawing. Please, because that doesn't help our perspective on how to understand this. Because all we see is this drawing, the one that was up with a little Lotus key on the side. So if you could do that and then throw in, I don't care if it has to be detailed, the water that you were talking about going under, so we can see all of that. That would give us a better perspective, I think, Dick, Marilyn, and Kevin.
I agree.
So...
Don't make it all that work if you're just gonna poo-poo it.
I'm not, I'd like to see it. I'm telling you right now, I'll have an open mind.
Okay, that's all I ask.
The rest of the board's comments, I'm done talking.
The only thing that I would, you know, may have down the road, and it's not about this subdivision, whatever we want to call it, it's that eleven and a half percent. We're going from eight, which, like you said, may be low in comparison to the median of towns in Massachusetts, which is something that we could maybe talk about, which I understand. If we're low out of the three hundred and fifty-one other towns in Massachusetts, and maybe we shouldn't be at eight percent. But we are. We've gone to nine and ten before, and now we're asking for that eleven and a half. So we're three and a half above the eight, which is thirty-five percent. You know, so what happens when somebody comes in and says twelve? Well, you did eleven and a half, and then it changes. And I always try to think ten years down the road, fifty years down the road, are we doing something now that we can't? Is it possible, with all that said, and I know you don't want to build a wall, or you don't want to do that, can you...
Can we make it eight percent in a second? I just gotta dig more dirt. Understand what percentages are, though, when you say it. In every hundred feet, it goes up eleven and a half, right? Or every hundred feet, it goes up eight feet. So you're talking three and a half feet, so for three hundred feet, you're an additional nine feet at the top of the hill. So I gotta cut down an additional nine feet. I can do it, but then you've got sides, you've got bankings on the side that looks crazy. And what I'm trying to say is, from a safety standpoint, if you have even, like, a bigger leveling area makes more sense, because now you can, when you get down to the bottom of the hill, you can level out a little bit, and it gives you a little bit of time. But like you say, in other towns, ten percent's standard. So, I mean, you're only asking for a foot and a half over every hundred feet, what most towns would allow. This is eight feet, I mean, think about, this town is one big hill.
But unfortunately, you know, and that's just where I am. We're eight, and we are asking for three and a half time, you know what I mean? So it's not what, it's not what Chusberry is, or what Paxton is, or what anybody else is. It's what Rutland is, Rutland's eight percent, and you're asking for eleven and a half, and that's what... If it's fixable, and then you end up with berms on the side of the road, nice walkways or nice brick. You know, I don't know. Keeps us within the regulations and it stops down the road from saying, well, we did eleven and a half, and then maybe we look at, maybe eight is too low, but as it is right now, it's... And then maybe we look at, maybe eight is too low, but as it is right now, it's.
Well, Kevin, my point is, when the NFPA says eight percent for a truck, that's what I wanna follow.
No, 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 that's not, let's rephrase that.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight percent is on the approach angle. It does not mean that's what we can.
Just the approach angle.
It's what you can. Perfect example, Mape, Mape-Lav, going down by Irish Lake, but down the bottom of the hill, that's more than eleven percent. Yeah. Going up, coming up that hill.
But when you come in, you've got less than.
You, you've just got a nice gradual slope, and you just keep climbing. So even Paul McGussey coming into center of town, I bet he was close to eleven percent coming into the center of town. So, you know, we have that in town. It's just that it's a short span coming from a dead stop or a slow turn. That's the only concern that we have.
Thanks for that clarification.
Rolling Ridge Estates is all ten percent.
What's that?
Rolling Ridge Estates, right over here, is all ten percent roads. Because that was the rule back then, before the DCI got involved, and changed it to eight percent.
Okay.
So they're all over the place. It's not like it's unsafe. It's safety, it's more of a safety issue than anything. It really is. So.
I still got Marilyn for, I, I, I think we still need digestion for.
Oh, I think that, yeah, definitely.
Dick, are you, I'm sorry.
Not as concerned about the, you know, eleven percent as I was. I mean, having spent some time in Worcester lately with the roads, or. Wetlands, yeah. And also growing up in New Hampshire, I mean, we had roads like that all over the place, so.
Dick, do you still, if we get some time and see some changes, open-minded to look at this?
I might.
Okay. It's positive. I gotta go with positive.
I'm happy with that. If Dick says I might, I'm there.
But I'm thinking his might meant some decent changes in the design.
Yeah, no, we, no, we, Cal made a lot of good suggestions, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a lot of that.
Dave, I, I, I'll look for some help from you. I'd like to continue the hearing if there's no public comment, because I think there's a lot of work still to do. And I don't think going through any of these more comments, other than, and again, Clea and Julie, and I'd like to, if you can answer some of these, or if they're gonna be changed as part of this design update, I'd like to get them to Carl as soon as possible. Because I really wanna make the next hearing productive, as po, as most, as best as we can, what I wanna say.
I suggest making it the first meeting in November if we could.
Okay. Oh, no.
Well, you're not gonna be here?
I'll be in Chicago.
Oh, shit.
What, hold it, what, when's the first meeting in November, please?
The eighth of November.
Yeah, I'm gonna be in Chicago. Oh, Norm, I'm sorry. I can't, I'll be back the second.
Second of December?
No, second, second meeting in November, I'll be back. I just, I've gotta go to Chicago for EverSource in the first week of November. Let me, let me make sure, give me a quick sec, I had this phone off.
Man, can I just ask the chief, just in, in a broad statement, if you feel comfortable answering it, without all the parameters and specifics, safety-wise, as you stated, one driveway to service ten houses, eight houses would be better than seven or eight driveways.
Absolutely agree with that statement.
Yeah.
It does mean, you know, that makes, it makes something, you know, it absolutely, the safety of the people I get, you know, has to, and should be, I wouldn't say has to, should be a, a big factor in a, uh.
Give me a quick sec.
A piece of this puzzle here to make sure that it's being done.
Yeah, I'm in Chicago from the sixth to the thirteenth.
Yes, I, I mean, I don't see any way of getting the work done, getting it reviewed, and having everybody back here by the twenty-fifth, or whatever it is of October, I just don't see it. So we'll have to go to the second meeting in November then.
If that's okay with you.
Well, I mean, it has to be, but yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It has to be.
Let's, uh.
Where's that near Thanksgiving?
That's the twenty-second of November.
Perfect. That's great. I'm gone.
Oh, you're gone, Clea?
Yeah. What a December. So we're into the.
Sorry, it's the only trip I've taken for EverSource for two and a half years, and I have to go.
By then, we'll have all forgotten what we talked about tonight.
I know.
We'll be, we'll be rehashing it again.
I'm German and Scottish, I forget very few things, so.
No, I'm just kidding. Uh, yeah, first, first one in December then, let's do it.
All right. We're gonna have to fill the continuing paperwork after that. Okay.
So that's the thirteenth of December.
Oh, Jesus.
That's perfect.
Yeah. I realize.
That gives you more time to get the drawings done.
It does. He's like, I love it.
We can plant Christmas Eve appetizers.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah. Just no town property, please. All right, I'll, um, take a motion to continue.
I'm making a motion to continue the hearing to December.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth at six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
And if we don't mind, I'd be looking to get an extension, the final actually did, like, just to have it. Not that we're gonna need it necessarily, but just to have it.
Just keep moving out.
Allow me to have the continuance, as it might be in December.
We got it clear, let's get these signed.
So that, but he's looking to get it further out for the, for his.
Oh, for the final.
So like, like what, a month later?
Up, yeah, three one twenty-three to five one twenty-three.
So from March to May.
The one that you did, I don't have the one that we talked about earlier. That was to March first. I didn't get it back, so it must have been a snafu email.
Wow, except it again, too.
I don't, I'll go back and look.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So I, I was just gonna be very conservative. I don't think we're gonna need the time, just to have it in case there's more continuances or what.
For final action.
Final action, May first.
Well, yeah, if you have a continuance, you move that out anyway.
Yes. I, I'm just telling the board that it's two actions, and I'm just giving you an update as well.
We'll do two motions, one for the continuance, and one for the extension.
But you're, you're not gonna take that one?
I don't expect to, it's just for it to be really super conservative.
Do I need two different motions for that?
Two different motions, one to acknowledge, or you can combine them, it don't, well, let's just take it as two separate ones.
Yeah, I'd rather do two. So the first one was, Kevin made it to extend the meeting for a continuance to December thirteenth at six forty-five.
And I could make the second motion to.
Vote for it.
Yes, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, um, we don't have to do roll call, because our Zoom, our Zoomy guy zoomed. So let me hear a vote for yays.
Yays.
Aye.
All right, that's, I say aye, that's four. Any nays? Of course, none. Four, nothing. Um, need a motion for.
Extension of a final action.
Extension of a final action of Hilltop Estates to five one twenty-two-three.
From March first, twenty-two-three.
From March first, twenty-two-three.
This was the first.
So moved.
I don't know what happened to it.
Okay, good.
This is the second one.
Any discussion? Uh, uh, do I hear, uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four, nothing. Okay. Let me get this signed, and we'll move on to. Let's see, what the heck is today? Ten, eleven. All right, there's mine, sir.
You gotta sign that, too, my friend.
Oh, the top?
Yeah. By the way, that's worse than mine.
I wanted to be a doctor. Somebody needs a script, I can write it. Adderall, anyone, sir?
What's today, the?
Twenty-eleventh.
Carl, I appreciate your time.
Oh, God. Let me change that, I put twenty-two-three, I didn't edit it.
Damn it, I might as well be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good. All right.
No, we talked about the street stuff before, I.
Yep. And I will strongly suggest on November thirteenth, you be there, or you're, uh, somebody be there.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. It's gonna get continued anyhow, because it'll be my free cash.
Continue.
Thank you, guys. Good time. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Carl, thanks, and we'll see you, uh, December thirteenth.
Sounds good.
Thanks for coming. All right, let's get back on top. Got another hearing that started seven o'clock, oops. Uh, Glenwood Road Estate Lot Permit. So let me find, I gotta read this for number three. Let me get all of the Hilltop Estates stuff out of here. Here we go. All right. This is a hearing at.
And the legal notice is up there if you'd like to read it.
Oh, I, I, thanks. I was looking for that. I wanna read this. This is for the public that's out there, too. It's a public hearing notice, Rutland Planning Board. The board will hold a public hearing at Rutland Public Library, two eighty Main Street, Rutland, Mass. October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two, uh, beginning at seven P M. on the petition of Ralph and Mary. I apologize.
Calario.
Calario. I'm bad. It's a Midwesterner. You can't pronounce anything out here. For a special permit to allow one estate lot at zero Glenwood, a portion of parcel ID zero four three dash A dash twenty-two, locate, located adjacent to one oh one, one oh three, and one oh five Glenwood Road. pursuant to zoning bylaw, Article Three, Section eight E, estate lots, and Article Seven, special permits. And this was, if there was any information you could con, or any required for information, you can contact the planning board office at five oh eight 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 six forty-one hundred, extension three zero zero one, and Mr. Norm Anderson, chairman, had put this in for the planning board. Okay, typically we start off with a nice presentation, and I presume.
Yes, thank you. So this is a special permit estate lot between one oh, the, the frontage between one oh three and one oh five Glenwood Road. It, uh, meets, meets all requirements of a special permit in zoning, with five, five acres behind the two-hundred-foot wide line at the building footprint, and a fifty-foot deep throat to the over fifty-foot frontage. So it's a single-family house on a five-acre lot.
All right.
So you called it one oh one, one oh three?
It's between one oh three and one oh five, so I presume it will.
So where on the plan is that stated?
It'll end up between one oh, it'll probably one oh three.
Where's one oh three on the plan?
There is no one oh three on the plan.
So which lot is it?
It is between.
Says one.
Twenty-two oh two and twenty-two oh one, assessors parcels.
Twenty-two oh two and twenty-two oh one.
It's labeled lot six on the plan.
Open up. There it is, Dick. It's, see the lot? There's a lot six that goes up, and it's lot six. There we go. There's a, I call the landing zone on, uh, I guess that would be Department of.
Conservation Restriction. You're talking about the rail trail. And I.
Off of Glenwood Road, yeah.
And I already said that, in my opinion, this is, uh, there's a problem here, and I don't know how to resolve it.
Yep.
Right behind your, your head, Clea, there's a piece of property now you are going to, uh.
Is that right there?
According to Mass law, you're not supposed to landlock anybody. So now you're gonna landlock that piece of property.
That is warrant.
Yes.
And that's been in existence.
But you're landlocking it.
No. That's, that's been in existence.
You're landlocking it. Because now you're gonna, you're wrapping around it, and I don't know, does it ever say? I need to be sure that it isn't landlocked.
It isn't landlocked. It already is.
So it was landlocked before?
And it has been for decades. Probably, probably dates back to the railroad, because what actually cut it off of the, the farm was the railroad railway.
Correct.
So the railroad railway.
Eighteen ninety.
Cut the farm in half and landlocked it.
So they bought the property and landlocked it.
Uh, they probably took it.
By eminent domain.
Correct.
I have seen that happen in the Midwest more often than I count it with farm property. In fact, my uncles had to deal with that, so.
Does that involve us at all?
I don't, again, I'm, I'm not an attorney.
Bonnie Bessie at our subcommittee meeting mentioned that you cannot landlock a piece of land.
But if it's already landlocked, does that constitute a landlocking when you do a?
But is it subject to an easement?
Now you're double landlocking it. You're adding another property in between the landlocks, so.
Well, not adding property. My understanding is, if, if it's landlocked, if there is any rights, those grandfathered rights would apply to any piece of land that was in that old deed. So if they have any rights, they would still exist.
Maybe we should find out if they do. I mean, I hear what you're saying, because what if somebody?
We're not taking away any rights.
Peter?
It's not here.
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation.
Who's in the other room? What the heck is this? Chatter. What's?
Is that your thinking music?
It is not.
Reminds me of Predator, the movie. It's like the Predator.
It's probably somebody that's unmuted on Zoom.
Anybody unmuted on Zoom?
The only people unmuted are, is Norm and RCA TV. Everybody else is muted.
Okay.
And when I can see air.
It is stopped.
Okay.
What's the purpose of the extension there to get over to the rail trail? You know, the, why, why would you not have just done a, done a block here?
The real purpose is to comply with zoning.
Because that, that meets your five acres out of.
Why couldn't you take five acres out of here?
Uh, for future development.
That's what I don't like.
The flag lot is what you don't like.
Exactly what I don't like is why are we now having property that's owned by, this guy's got a house up over here, and he owns land over here, and now there's five other houses in between it? I hate these letter lots and these Z lots and the.
Yeah, we haven't done anything about it.
But it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I don't like it at all. I don't like it at all.
We've talked about we need to fix that, and we just haven't got around to it.
I don't think I'll be signing this one if it looks like that. I'm not gonna put my name on something like that, regardless if we can or not. I don't think it's, why not right here? You know, it's all about cramming in as many houses as we possibly can, regardless of what this lot looks like.
That's not true. This is fifteen acres of land, and we're reserving enough, we're reserving enough to get three buildable lots that comply with zoning. And a lot on that plan would comply with zoning.
No, and I, I, I get that, believe it. I get it. I.
There could be a lot more development on fifteen acres of land.
And I understand that. I totally understand that. I don't like these lots. I don't like any of them, and I just don't like them. I don't like them at all.
Are these existing, uh, access to this land?
Yeah, that is the remaining land, yep. There's two access points, the remaining list, yep.
You say Peter's not around.
No, he's not. He did send, if I'm not mistaken, David, he did send in a comment about, um, from the Conservation Commission.
I wanna know about what, because they, he had, I know Glenwood and around it, they had problems with wetlands.
Sorry, pardon, I didn't mean to interrupt. That comment was for a different matter.
Okay, I apologize.
That's for the, a matter of upcoming. I do believe this was before the Conservation Commission recently, for any, a, a, uh.
Yeah, I don't think any of that matters here with this board, but it's.
Actually, it does. We, we like to communicate among boards, so was there any?
We have order of conditions issued by the.
Okay.
Rutland, ConCon. We have, uh, septic approval by Board of Health.
Excellent.
But is there wetlands in those two corridors?
What are these?
No, the two corridors out to Glenwood.
Right here. Well, there's three. Currently, there's three corridors. One, two, three.
Two only.
Yeah.
So why does this say?
To answer, to answer, to answer your question, there's no wetlands between the house and the frontage. All the wetlands at the rear of the house.
Okay.
Why does it say not available lot?
Oh, it has to until, Kevin, until the special permit is approved.
Right now it's remaining land, it does not meet zoning.
Yeah.
Until a special permit.
When the special permit's granted, then that can be taken off of the plan, because they're gonna have to come back for an A and R on this. And then that will be taken off when the special permit's granted. All right.
Uh, no, I think you're referring to the remaining land, which is gonna stay not a buildable lot until we get a future special permit or a future A and R.
Saying, they're, they're doing this, this way, so that they can build here later. That says not a buildable lot here, so. My question is, why not take your five acres back this way?
Oh, I see that.
Put two houses in instead of three.
Yes, I'm, I apologize. I was looking up the not buildable lot without a special permit. Once you get the special permit, you can take that off of the, uh, the land here when you come back to get an A and R, correct?
Typically, the note stays on the plan.
Okay.
That it can no longer be future divided.
Okay.
That's a requirement.
Well, that one, I'd say, but it's not the one that's above that. It says it's not a buildable lot without a special permit.
That's correct. That stays.
Okay.
Because you, you need to then show the special permit or record the special permit.
Okay, good. I'm with Kevin. I don't like it, but it complies with zoning, so I, I'm, I'm...
I, but you gotta, I mean, this is the intent of the estate law, right? We're putting three houses on 15 acres when we could have done a lot more.
Yeah, but the intent, if you look at the drawing, was to have a complete lot, not, not flag lots, which is what we...
And that's the thing, and now, I mean, I know probably not, but what are the other two lots going to potentially look like? Whatever you can pull out of here, it's going to be a whole bunch of...
No, the reason for that is you need 200 feet at the building line. So at each access point, there'll be a 200-foot-wide envelope for the building.
Right here.
Yes, and that's what, that's what makes Lot 6 skinny, is I had to reserve 400 feet for the future house.
And you had to reserve, uh, five acres, so...
Right. I had to reserve 10 acres and 400 feet of width.
Yep.
So that's the result. But again, in the end product, it's pretty darn good. You have three single-family houses set off the road on 15 acres of land.
Then I understand all that. I don't, I spent three years on the Board of Assessors. This isn't good. This stuff doesn't work down the road. When we're all dead, and somebody else is going to go figure that out, it's going to be a pain in the butt unless every single thing is pinned and pointed, you know? And it isn't unless they pay for it, so now you've got...
Creates open space.
A lot of work to know where the even boundaries are, so somebody that owns this in a hundred years is going to have no idea where their land is, unless they pay tens of thousands of dollars, you know, because none of this is ever documented out there. It's just on a piece of paper, but nobody can. I look at that 100 years down the road. If it's my, whoever it is, it's going to cause problems. There's no doubt in my mind.
And a special permit, you know, we should have something in there for bounds.
Yeah, you got a good point.
I don't, yeah.
Norm, do you have any comments?
Uh, just a couple of things quickly, at least in my opinion. It certainly meets the criteria for an estate lot. And, uh, talking about the bounds, if you recall, we amended our subdivision regulations that requires bounds, the permanent bounds be placed on any new lots that are created. So at every corner, at the angle, there will be some sort of a permanent bound.
Is that true? Do you guys do that? And who does that?
But I think it's in the subdivision.
I think it's in the subdivision.
Yeah.
It's in the subdivision.
Norm, with the estate lots, I don't think we have any authority for that, do we? We have to put that in the estate lot bylaw?
I, I believe, I believe we included, basically, in the state law's an A and R. And I believe we included A and Rs in that requirement. It's a, it's a very beginning part of our subdivision regulations. So I believe it applies to A and R lots as well as subdivision regulations, which, like I say, an estate lot is an A and R.
Mark, I have to, I haven't, I, I can't, I remember this discussion and us approving all that, but I, um...
Certainly hasn't been enforced. I'll tell you that much.
It's been enforced in the subdivision. I guarantee you that, because Bryce Lemon has...
I think the bounds on the roadway, but I don't on the lots. I highly doubt you have markers on the lots.
There. So who's on the hook for that down the road when somebody realizes that they were supposed to be done? Is that on...
Well, I, I, I take that back. I don't think Bryce Lemon was, because that was an approved subdivision before this went into effect. So I think where it came into play was Arrowhead?
There, there is a national law that every plan recorded has to be, permanent monuments have to be placed, and they have to be, uh, reconstructed, basically. Your work has to be shown, and that's, that's survey law.
It doesn't happen in this time. It doesn't happen.
Yeah, it does. This, well, it should.
I think a lot of people come to me with this stuff already.
It's not every corner, but if you look on here, it shows all the monuments that...
The surveyor typically puts pins in at turns, at least. They did when I bought them last time.
They put wooden stakes in there, and then they, they're not there.
The wooden stakes, I agree with you, yeah.
They're supposed to be re-bought. They're supposed to be actual...
Yeah, you can see here with the iron pin.
Lead pipe. They're supposed to be, and it's not, and I know this is going to be a problem. That's why I'm just going to bring it to the attention of them now, and I'm going to continue to, until we can potentially make a change.
On this, on this plan, just looking quickly, there's...
Solid steel rods are supposed to be installed.
There's one, two, three, four, four or five drill holes, a few iron pins, and then stone wall that tie the bounds.
Yep, I see that.
The deed of Warren, I think, calls for the stone wall at the corner.
Well, I'd like, yeah, I'm going to go dig out my, up to subdivision and see if the, the balance is, because, Mark, I, I can't, I can't recite it off the top of my head.
No, I'm not disagreeing. I just...
I get you're saying it's not being enforced.
It's never been.
And that's, that's not, all we can do is turn that over to the building inspector. He's the enforcement officer, so am I wrong? Anybody on the board? So, okay.
So Norm Anderson?
Oh, Norm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, the thing is, the, that requirement should be noted in our building permit system, so the responsibility would lie to, uh, the applicant for the building permit. And until that is in place, they should not be issued a building permit.
So it falls back on the building inspector, doesn't it, Norm?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. I guess we probably, do you think, I guess I'll ask the board, should we maybe send a little note to the building inspector about this? Because if Mark's right, and I, I can't say if you read it wrong, because I have not been out of properties and the new properties, but if, if it's a true statement that there are not markers going in, we need to get that nipped in the bud. That's my opinion, so... Dave, can I give you a little assignment? To, uh, just an email. It doesn't need to be a whole letter, but an email to ask that question to what Norm said, that is that in the permitting system? If it isn't, we should get it in there.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else on the board, before I go to the, before I go to the public? This is a hearing. I don't have anything. Go to the public. Anybody has comments on this estate lot? Mark, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, with that being said, I guess the next step is, uh, close the hearing if we have no other comments.
I was here for a signed permit for, uh, 242 Berry Paxton Road.
We haven't yet.
Haven't got there yet.
Yep.
You're on the agenda.
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. We're, we're a little bit behind because of Hilltop.
It's not like you're closing the whole meeting.
No, 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 no. No, 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 it's just...
I wish.
You've got a big stack, you've got a big stack waiting for you.
Go grab a coffee if you want.
Yeah, okay. I guess I'll, uh, take a motion to close the hearing.
I won't vote. We'll too close the hearing on the, uh, Ralph and Mary, Calario.
Zero Glenwood, I think it is.
Yeah, Zero Glenwood Estate Lot.
Special permit. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll go through, uh, since Norm's here, we got to go through roll call. Dick?
Aye.
All right. Marilyn? Kevin?
Stane.
All right. Norm?
Aye.
And Tim, aye. Four, four, one, Tamika with one abstention.
I think it's actually four, zero, one.
Oh, four, zero, one. Thanks, yeah.
I'm recording the vote.
Yeah. I got to play for the Cubs. They're always... Excellent. All right, so we've got the hearing closed. The, uh, I guess the next step is, um, vote for the special permit. And then, Dave, you'll have to do the findings and facts, then we'll sign the special permit after we get the findings and facts, if I'm not correct.
That's fine. A decision will be drafted with the standard conditions, and that's circulated to the board for signature.
Excellent, so I'll take a motion to approve the special permit.
I make motion to approve the new special permit.
Second. All right, any discussion on this? All right, let's do the roll call. Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Kevin?
Stane.
Norm?
Aye.
And Tim, aye. So due to the fact this is a supermajority, we have four, zero, and one abstention.
Right, so that means that it passes.
It's approved. It's approved and passes. So we'll get a decision, um...
I think we have the A and R in the agenda as well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I think that was the next one. Approval not required, because we've typically done these in, uh, parallel.
I think the recommendation was that the special permit should be taken first.
Yep, make sure that...
Because the A and R is dependent on the special permit, not the other way around.
Yes, correct.
Because the special permit allows for the use, the A and R allows for the, we have to be divided, so they serve different purposes.
So I'm looking for the, uh, drawing.
It's actually the same drawing.
Oh, it is?
Yes, I did look for the drawing. That is the A and R plan.
Okay, I apologize. I was looking for that. All right, let's get it out and see. Nope, correct. The signature's up top. I guess this isn't a hearing. It's an A and R, so does anybody have any, is the board, anybody on the board have any comments about the A and R?
I'll just make the same comment, that I don't like these lots, and I think we should be looking, um, at changing our...
A and R bylaw?
A and R bylaws, to not allow for these lots, because it's not going to help us down the road.
Flag lots, yep.
I'd really like to make a change. Right enough.
No, I think, you know those little, those little things that walk and do this? The little, uh, toys, the wind-up toys? That's what it sounds like. Okay, just making sure for the A and R frontage. Okay, you got that. Dave, help me out with this. If this, this zoning for R40 for an A and R doesn't comply...
But it does comply because...
With a special permit.
The special permit...
Yes.
Has allowed for the frontage to be created at 50 feet.
Correct.
By special permit. So therefore, because the special permit was just approved, the actual legitimate required frontage is 50 feet.
The only reason I say that is it's up at the top where it says zoning district. It's got minimum frontage at the top of this drawing. Wouldn't we change that to an estate lot special permit frontage for the A and R? Or would we leave it?
If I could, I...
Jump in, sure, Mark.
In the past, you, we didn't want to change that because it, it actually is zoning, and that is the zoning requirement.
Okay, I'm fine.
So what takes care of that is the required note?
In the Lot 6?
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm good with that, because this is an R40 zone, so I, I get that, yeah.
I think if you read all these things together...
Yep.
Then that's how, you know, it makes sense if you read it all together.
I just, I wanted to make sure the i's were dotted and t's were crossed for this one. This is my first rodeo. Anybody have any comments on the A and R? Kevin got yours noted.
Yeah, and I was just curious, just because you mentioned that 5135 on that first, the other two openings at 3777 and 4904. I'm just curious how that would get approved down the road if that's under 50 feet.
No, they're not.
No, they've got the terms. See that? See this? You take that 37 and add the 12 point.
Oh, all right.
It's three tenths of a foot over it, yeah, yeah. And if you add the one foot to the 49, it's four tenths over it.
Okay.
Or actually, I rephrase that, four 100s.
So they were all done right at the right?
I like to see that laser.
I just wouldn't want you to, it's, obviously, you know...
Laser print out.
Yeah, no, it's very tight.
Four 100s of a foot.
There's almost no frontage to spare.
So if, uh, I guess I'll ask if the public has any comments for this A and R before we move on to the vote. All right, um, I guess I need a motion to...
Endorse.
Endorse, thanks, Dave. I keep going to say approve. Endorse, uh, this A and R at Zero Glen, or, it's Zero or 97? No, let's prepare for Zero Glenwood. I have, I have the same thing, Dick. I just, I'm not a big fan of Zero Glenwood Road.
Boy, you can't get the street number before the A and R.
I know, yeah, I know. It's just...
So it's, you're doomed, especially over a road like Glenwood, where you have a lot of different lots created.
I'm so moved that we approved the...
Second, excellent. Any discussion? All right, uh, I'll start with Norm.
Aye.
I got an aye. Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Kevin?
I'm staying.
I'm staying. I go aye, so the vote is, uh, four, zero, and one abstention. And, uh, special pen signature time.
We'll give these to Dave.
Yep, give these all back today with the old timestamp on it. I can't fold the crabs. Today is the 11th, correct?
Yes.
10, 11, and I will not put 2023.
All righty.
Did someone have to return to correct it?
No, I just, it was on an extension. Oh, boy. Hey, I screwed up. I put date of approval. I put today's date. Because you've got date of approval and date of endorsement.
Uh, David, I think you're the same, right?
I don't see an issue there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because...
The approval is the endorsement, and this happened tonight.
Okay.
The reason, the reason for both is if you were to vote to approve tonight and sign it next week.
Okay.
Let's say yes, right?
You're abstaining, correct?
Correct.
All right, one pen coming your way.
I'm going to scroll.
Norm, you want to come uptown and sign this later on?
Actually...
I was going to say, three's, three is enough. I just didn't...
We've been authorized to allow three, you've authorized this point to offer three signatures.
Yes, I'm fine with that. I just want to, I wanted to give him the opportunity if he wanted to, but if not, uh, three will be enough, and...
Hi, boys.
Good night, boys.
This is another one.
Hey, are you all done over on Campbell Street, my young lad?
Yeah, the bar.
With all those, with all of, um...
One or two more.
One or two more?
Yeah.
I saw the one closest as you're heading into town that still had equipment on, so I assume there was a one or two houses maybe going to go there.
Oh, yeah, that's actually on Glenwood.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be the one.
Okay.
I'll be covering that.
Because it looked like all the ones on Campbell were done.
Yeah, there's one on Campbell.
Okay.
And then one on Glenwood.
Excellent. Well, if you, if you feel like you want to, you could pave some of Brittenell for us. We're good with that. Thanks, Mark. Thanks. All right, let's move on to number five. Uh, 232 Berry Paxton Road, hearing at 7:15. It's only now. All right, let me get to...
If you're interested, the legal ad is up on the screen.
Thanks, I wanted to read that. You're the man. All right, public hearing notice, Rutland Planning Board. The board will hold a public hearing at Rutland Public Library, 280 Main Street, Rutland, Mass., October 11th, 2022, at 7:15 PM on the petition of Darren Senna. Is that right? Did I pronounce that right? Sir? Okay, applicant's not here. For site plan review to allow one non-illuminated freestanding sign at 232 Berry Paxton Road, parcel ID 014-C-2 pursuant of sections 6.1, 2, and 7.3 of the signed bylaw. For more information, contact Planning Board at 508-886-4100, Extension 3001. Mr. Norm Anderson, Chairman, the Rutland Planning Board, had put that in.
Okay, make one comment?
Yes.
Pardon me if you don't mind, sir. I believe the applicant is here on the telephone.
I gotta, I gotta have the applicant do the presentation, then we'll go to...
I just want to make a comment. Is this 232 or 242? Because I've received a letter for this. I am 240, assuming I'm in a butter.
232.
242.
Yeah, it's, um, 232, so there's a, any butter, I think, David, is it 100 feet?
300 feet.
300 feet, thank you.
From the subject property.
Yes.
Which is two hundred thirty-two Berry Paxton Road. If you're within that area, it's within the receiving of the petition.
Okay. Alright, um, I see three iPhones and a friend, so...
It's the two oh three number, we don't see that from here.
I don't see that now.
If you ask the person to identify themselves as...
Please identify yourself as a representative for the two thirty-two Berry Paxton Road.
Right, um, I'm Darian Williams, I'm from Hartford sign, and our, our client is the new owner of this property at two thirty-two Berry Paxton Road. And, um, we are asking for approval of the new roadside sign that will be in-ground, which is located to comply with the town regulations in our drawing key gave you. Um, the existing undocumented sign from the previous owner will be removed. And then, uh, we will also be placing a sign on one of the buildings up on the property. Um, we've done all the, uh, a, a notification, you guys have done the notifications for the butters. Um, and we were, we're just wondering, um, seeing as the adjacent property has a sign that's very close to the road, if it would be possible, although this is not, you know, I'm, I'm not begging for this or anything, uh, to move our sign a little closer to the road. In order to comply, I'm showing the, um, the, a little, uh, detail of the survey, uh, showing that our sign is gonna be located basically twenty-nine feet back from the road. The property line falls at twenty-four feet, and, and the reg that I found said that, uh, the sign has to be five feet behind the, the property line. Um, I, I would also explain and note that, um, the prop, our, our client is going to do some required landscaping around the sign, uh, and, and also in the springtime, uh, arrange to remove the obscuring margin of trees and brush along the road that blocks the, the view of his property from the north, I believe, um, which will probably be better, more visible for, uh, passive signs for people exiting the property.
I'm, uh, I'm confused about...
Oh, just a second, I just wanted to make sure, any, any other comments from the applicant?
From the applicant, no.
Okay, before I get to, let me ask the board, and then we'll get to the public, please. Anybody on the board? Mr. Williams, I will take.
Right, you want it to be easy, right?
Exactly.
I just want to verify what the applicant said about a neighboring, was there something about a neighboring sign?
Yeah, it's right here, Kevin, it shows.
I want to make sure, I know what, not the existing sign.
No, she's got a, there's, looks like there's a sign that's inside the twenty-four-foot area, it says, I'm guessing, that's the one you're talking about? Yeah, there in yellow.
Which...
Right, that, if you're looking at the detail, that little sign that's, uh, that's in yellow, that is the existing sign, which is well outside of the property line. And heaven knows how it all got put there. And then when I, you know, I'm from Connecticut, so I, when I went to research that, because we were hoping to put the sign right there, we found out that that was an illegal sign.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not gonna...
I had thought you had mentioned about another abutting sign, be it like the four-corner sign or another, you know what I'm saying? That's what I thought she had mentioned, that there was an additional sign.
Yeah.
You're replacing...
Well, can I address that? I just happened to be up there doing some measuring, and I just happened to drive up the road, and I noticed the next property, I believe it's north, um, uh, is, I don't know if it's a Christmas tree farm or something, but...
Asian.
It obviously was the same kind of sign that this property has.
Right.
Where it's very close to the road. Um, and I certainly understand that, because there's no visibility, because the, the forestry is very, very thick in that area. So no one can see any of the properties, pretty much.
Are you asking to, like, this new sign to basically be at the twenty-four-foot line, move it five foot closer? Is that what you were looking to ask?
I might wish this.
I'm sorry?
I just want you to approve it as it, or more than willing to comply with your regulations.
Okay.
But I just thought I'd ask, since I don't really know, I mean, how Rutland deals with illegal signs or signs that are on permanent, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I can tell you how, it, it, and Dave, you can tell if I'm wrong in the process, or anybody on the board. My understanding is if, if, uh, somebody wants to report something, they file a report with the building inspector, then he has to investigate it. So the planning board...
Oh, okay.
All the planning board does is make sure that any new signs that go in comply with the signed bylaw. And then if there's any violations, that's handled by the building inspector, not by the planning board, so, just a...
Right, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, tip up the app, tip the apple cart, or however one might say that. So, you know, you, you can take my, my wishlist request there with a grain of salt there, I just would like to get, um, my customer, his sign, and, and have it comply, and everyone be happy.
So it is, is going in the same, it's going five feet farther than the other one?
Yeah, well, it's going fi, if I'm not mistaken, the sign ball, they could put it right at the property line, at the twenty-four-foot section, but she's actually gone five feet farther beyond that to put their sign.
So this sign is going farther off of the...
There is a regulation that says that, that you have to be five feet away from any property line, so...
Oh, the property line's twenty, I apologize. Yeah. I thought, I saw twenty-four, and I was doing my math wrong, so, yeah, so she's in compliance with the signed bylaw. Okay. Alright, Marilyn, any questions?
Nope, I, uh, I think it works, looks okay, looks good.
Mr. Williams.
Dave, can you go to that, ma'am? Yep, swing it, and then what's... Yep, bring it down. Okay. Um, what's going on? Have you read the small print over on the left-hand side?
On your title report encumbrances.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes.
Um, I don't, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, title report, it says...
I don't, I don't, I don't have a title report, I don't know what that is.
Well, this was given in our packet, and when you look at it very finely, it says condominiums. It, it does not say anything about...
When...
Storage sheds, it's all con, you know, it says condos, condos in there.
The, the question comes up in this application, there was part of the application documentation was a draft Alta NSPS land title survey, and the client was Freedom Property LLC. And it was done by DC Engineering and Survey, Inc.?
And also when there says, uh, two thirty-six and two thirty-eight.
Yeah, there, there's just a lot of inconsistencies in this report, which was part of our, um, application to the planning board.
So you're, you're talking about the actual survey that I included?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Well, well, to my knowledge, I don't, you know, all I'm asking for is a sign for our client who's doing the, um, the storage facility, so I, I, I don't know anything about the rest of the property.
Well, I'd say that I want a legal piece of paper.
No, what's, um, I mean, I think this is being provided for reference to show the site itself generally.
Okay.
How what the board is approving is what you see right here, this is the actual approval.
Alright, are you bringing up something different on the property?
If this is supposed to be a storage shed, why is it saying condos over here?
Oh, that ain't enough, you'd have to talk to the survey.
Yeah, because he put his license on this, and he...
Yeah.
Had a report that's incorrect.
Maybe he figured people would be living in storage units at some point, because you know, it'd be cheap places.
Well, maybe, it's not a far, uh...
I'd probably be very happy with one of those, nice quiet, all by myself, shut the door, shut off the lights.
Alright, I don't, I don't, and again, the board can tell me, I don't think it's a, it's pertinent to sign by.
It was given to us as signage.
Yeah.
As storage, not condo.
So you're saying that you want that changed?
I feel that it's, it's an illegal piece of paper to us. If anything, it should not have come to us, or something like that, or whatever, but it's in front of us, and it's part of our packet, therefore, I want it either changed or deleted.
Do we need this to be part of our packet?
Well, it shows the layout of the storage sheds.
I think the applicant, as far as I understood it, for their purposes of getting a site approval, provided a general site plan to show some basic orientation layout of the site, not for any other purpose than for the purpose of getting a site, site plan.
Yeah.
If it's not needed for the packet, we remove it, then we can move forward and approve the sign without...
Good, have them send us a new packet.
Okay, just give an addendum, I don't know. I congratulate you on being able to read that, first of all, because that's really impressive.
I do too, I second that, because I can't read this small print myself. I, I apologize, I was just trying to be thorough, so I thought I'd include the entire survey, because honestly, I couldn't read it, you know, beyond what I, you know, I had to zoom in and make a detail of that area, um, for when the sign...
Dick, I agree with you, but I don't think for this portion of the signed bylaw, it's relevant, I don't. Can I talk you out of it? I, I would suggest, this is me personally, and again, I'm not an attorney, that you might want to talk to your title people, because right now, if anybody looks at this property, they're gonna assume it's a condo, by this title, this title report.
Well, what I will do, talk to my, my client, and also, um, you know, I got this from his surveyor, so it's really the surveyor's...
Yes, yeah.
Expertise, as to how this was done, and I, again, I, I will make him aware of this.
That's all I'm asking.
If it has to be, now, so, I would think that this is on record at your, because he probably had to, you know, uh, submit this when he bought the property or something, and I'll, I'll just let him know that this needs to be corrected.
Yes, because the former owner does have condos up the street.
Yeah, I, I think this is a cut and paste. Any other, that's all I think we were asking, is just, because the guy put a, a professional license stamp on here, on documents that are incorrect, and in my world, he, he's getting a lot of trouble doing that.
Okay, well, I will, I will get in touch with him and the, um, and my client, and I apologize for that, again, I, I wasn't aware of any...
No, no problem.
Of it saying that anywhere. Um, but again, I, I was just, you know, innocently asking for a, a, a sign to comply with your regulations.
Yep, no, no, that's fine. You're up, sir, public time.
A couple of comments.
Excuse me, I just need your name and address, please.
Jean Trudeau, two forty Berry Paxton Road.
Thank you.
Um, so a couple of comments. You might want to check the address on this, because, um, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe, I'm two forty, next door to me was two thirty-eight. And then they, then, uh, George Lucier put a duplex up behind this property, so there weren't enough numbers for addresses. So, there's some screwy numbering going on here, and I'm not sure which piece of property is what address.
You, you may be right about that, I'm glad the sign...
The two thirty-two might be the duplexes in the back, and not the storage facility in the front. I'm just saying for your...
It does say two thirty-two slash two thirty-four.
You may want to, I want to, I want to say that the storage facility is two forty-two, even though it's before my property, I know it sounds crazy. But beyond me is nothing but MDC land, so...
Can I say something? I have a picture of the existing sign before, um, our customer put a banner over to update it, and it actually does say two thirty-two on top, uh, but it does, on, on the base of it, it says two forty-two, so you may, you may be correct about that. Um, and how would I find out what the address really is? And how could my, my, my client buy a property to not know what address it is?
Well, again, I'm gonna go back to your...
Surveyor?
Surveyor that has a PE stamp?
You could have, you could talk to our town clerk here. Ma'am, you can talk to the town clerk in Rutland, and she can verify that address for you. And if it's wrong, then we'll hear about it, we'll come back around to us, because the fire department needs to know where they're going.
Yeah.
With all the power of the ambulance.
I'm like, where is the two thirty-two of two thirty-four?
Yeah, it's got a, it's an easement to go back to, lot, I can't even read it.
Should be other signage there, too.
Yeah. Dave, let me ask you a question, can we approve this sign bylaw? And then, uh, can, um, you have, do you have to do a, a findings, and then we have to sign that?
Decision's gonna be drafted on this matter, yes.
So what I was, where I was going with this is I don't have a problem tonight approving this sign, contingent on the correct address being provided to the report.
I did have a couple of...
No problem.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so this sign is gonna be farther off the road than the existing sign?
Yes.
What I'm trying to understand?
It's gonna follow the sign bylaws as written in Rutland.
Okay, because when the original sign was put up, we had some vision issues as far as being able to see up the road when you're coming out of the driveway. But if it's gonna be farther from the road, then that...
Twenty-nine feet, actually.
That should be...
So the sign next to it, that is inside of the twenty-nine feet, um, it, she's almost, um, I shouldn't say she, that sign is, uh, basically...
She said five foot, I think, off.
Yeah, five, so it's twenty-nine feet off the property, or off the road.
Off the road.
And, uh, five feet off of the property line.
Okay, okay, that's, that's an improvement, actually, probably. Um, I'm curious, what, does it show what the dimensions of the sign are?
Yeah, um, it is, oh, there was a hundred inches, and...
Right there.
Yeah, thanks, Dave, there it is. So the sign is, uh, a hundred, a hundred inches wide and thirty-two inches high. That's a sign, and then there's a base on the bottom, which is sixty wide by twenty-five high, so...
Now this says...
That's the one on the, that's the one on the, right here, that's actually gonna be on the building.
Oh, that's on the building, okay, I love it.
Yep, yep, so the total height is five feet.
Five foot, yep. Sixty inches.
Yep, and the total width is, is it a hundred inch? Hundred inch, a hundred inches wide, so that's, yeah, ninety-six.
And then there's gonna be, uh...
Non-illuminated.
Non-illuminated.
Yes, no flashing lights.
Well, that's a good thing. Uh, did you say something about a sign going on the building as well?
Yes. There's a sign that'll be on the building.
Do you have another packet there, right here?
Yep, that is, uh, ten feet wide by three feet, two inches, um, tall. That'll be on the building, she actually's got a little picture of it, um, that Dave has up right now, which I don't think is obtrusive, because it's back on this, on a building.
These requirements of the sign bylaw for all signs.
Yep.
Looks like there was a sign there anyway.
Yeah.
The white sign.
Yeah, it looks like it was half of it, but it looked like it complied with the signed bylaw, if George did it, it complied with the signed bylaw. I'm confident of Mr. Lucier following the rules.
I'm just curious, so, signed bylaws, uh, there's no difference between, uh, say, a commercial area, or like this is what is referred to as village zoning in the town, as opposed to, um, straight-up commercial zoning? Is there any, signed bylaws the same regardless?
I don't think so. My understanding, Dave, I think I'm not wrong.
The only thing I ask is, is when this, when this place was approved, right? So when I, when I bought this land and built my house twenty-four years ago, I did my homework and made sure that everything was residentially zoned around me.
Correct.
Then, the town had a consultant come in, it was rezoned to village zoning. They said, oh, a breakfast place, a barber shop, something like that.
Yes.
So this was approved by the zoning board, which annoyed the crap out of me, honestly, because I don't look at that as a village thing. So I have concerns about, you know, not to mention, there's other things on the plan, like when this was built, it said, every, every place that was disturbed was gonna be loomed and seeded, nothing was ever done. Then the second it was done being built, the final building, I don't even think the building was done, wasn't a hundred percent complete, sold. Now, this, this group owns it, so...
Oh, it's been in existence for a while. I, I, because I remember approving this thing four or five years ago.
Yeah, well, it took that long to finish building it, that's the thing.
He, he had it...
Literally just, just finished this building at the end of the summer, so...
Okay, and I apologize.
Um, so I have, for me, you know, I have some concerns about how big is this sign gonna be by the road, like, yeah, you know, you can say, well, geez, John, what's the big deal, but, um, I don't know.
How big is the existing sign? Small, it's small.
So are you saying you don't like the sign?
I mean, I know, but I'm just, I mean, I've tripped by it a million times, but if that's three feet, now we are, we're doubling the size?
Sign they're proposing?
Uh, I'd like, I would like it if it was smaller than ten feet wide.
You move back five feet, but the sign will still be the same.
I mean, okay, it's not ten feet wide, it's a hundred inches, but that's pretty big, I don't know.
It's gonna be set back so far from the road that it won't be intrusive at all, in fact, that's part of the, the sad part for my client, is that we have to set it back so far, and remember that he is intending to landscape around it, and also maybe landscape and remove trees, so I'm, I'm thinking it's gonna... So I'm, I'm thinking it's going to end up looking nice, you know, in the front of the property.
Yep. Well, I mean, if it meets the sign by laws.
It does, it's the. And like I said, if there's, if there's any issues that anybody has with signs, uh, written, a written complaint to the building inspector is how to get the process started for come.
And then they must also volunteer to be on the bylaw subcommittee to write the.
For any updates, no. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the audience and anybody knew that, um, we don't have any authority, the planning board, to enforce any, any bylaws. The enforcement officer in Rutland is, at least for these bylaws, our building inspector.
Okay. Um, I only have, I have one other question that's kind of unrelated to this, but I'm hoping you can steer me in the right direction. Um, there's some drainage issues, uh, with this property regarding my property. And I'm wondering who I should direct that to?
Concom.
To get that taken care of.
Make sure, I would definitely find out if, if it was done correctly according to Concom's.
Orders of condition.
The conditions.
The conditions.
Order of condition because they had a detention pond put in and I believe that was under Concom.
Peter Crane is the chairman of the Concom. That's who I would start out with an email to.
Peter Crane.
Yes. And.
John, if you go onto the, uh, website and you go onto the Concom's page, there is an email address there.
What is Concom?
Uh, Conservation Commission.
Okay.
So if you click on your page, there's an email address that says conservation@townofrutland.org. If you just click on it, it'll send us a message. Um, Peter is on vacation, but we can get you on an agenda. Um, cause that email will come to me and then we can work something out.
All right.
To have a discussion.
Okay.
That's all I got. Any other comments from the public?
Who's that?
Oh. Kevin, jump in, dude.
No, I just, I bring up his point about, you know, when he said that back and I, I think about these things a lot when we sit here on our board and things are talked about and they were supposed to be mulching and loam and grass seed and none of that happened. And those were in conditions on somebody. I mean, these are those things that I know we don't, I mean, I hope you understand the town of Rutland doesn't necessarily have the, 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 the force behind it to go and do all these things. I mean, we're, you know what I mean? We'll do everything we can, but it's, you know, it is unfortunate that that happened. I want to let you know that I recognize you said that. I don't know if you can do anything tonight about it. But I don't know how down the road do you get these builders and these people that say they're going to make it look nice and then they don't.
Unfortunately, it's the building inspector and the building permits issued's got to go and.
So if you wanted to and not say we'll go anywhere, send an email to the building inspector, ask them about it and say, you know, we were told five, ten years ago that this is.
Essentially, I was waiting like for the building to be done. And then if nothing happened, then I was going to say something. But like I said, the building wasn't even one hundred percent complete. And essentially it was sold. So the whole property was sold.
And I'm not saying anything could be done because now it's sold, it's transferred.
Yeah, now it's changed hands.
Done, but at least it brings the attention to the building inspector that there was a non-compliance from the previous owners.
So, um, I guess I will, if there's no other comments, take a motion to close the hearing.
So we're going to close, uh, uh, close the hearing, but then are we going, going to vote on the sign?
Yep.
And then we request the changes? I mean, in the paperwork?
I, I'm not really excited about changing the paperwork because her whole goal was to show us the layout of the, of the buildings. Um, I think we were just, me personally, I'm suggesting to her that maybe.
If it's like that and it comes to us, I want it straight. How does the building inspector take a look at this stuff and read things like this and how does?
Get through?
Get through and how does the town, uh, look at, oh, how do we comply? Oh my gosh, it says condos, tear down those storage, put up the condos.
Well, part of it, just from being a prof, and being, wanting to be a professional engineer, I haven't got my license yet. Um, is that that stamp right there? Anybody could right now say that he stamped something they didn't even look at or didn't even follow. So, um, if, if I was going to buy this property and I was given this title and I bought it, I basically could say I have a title search, it's incorrect and a P E engineer, a P E surveyor stamped it. So it would be on him as an insurance. So again, from the planning board's perspective, she was trying to show what the layout was look out and where this, and then this was going to be her detail to show where her sign's going to go and I'm fine with that. I agree that we got this and it's wrong, but I don't think it bears on the, uh.
I want to have something on the town record. So the building inspector, if he had a problem, would come and read it and I want it to be right.
I don't know if he reads this.
I don't, well, then town council should. I don't want false information on our records, period.
Do we really think it was a cut in pace from the condominiums he built down the street?
No, this is a title search from a, a title company.
But if this verbiage right here was literally just a chop and they just put it right back in there.
It was done in May.
I think so. So it was May, just this twenty twenty two?
Uh, yeah, May, this year, it was done May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Signed off.
I mean, unless the, unless the duplex up back was sold as condos, I don't know.
Yeah.
Sold separately, I don't know. Should be a multifamily house or something like that, I don't know.
I mean, I don't have a problem on the board of X-ing this out and putting a signature from the board on it saying, uh, information not required. I mean, I, I don't see jumping them through hoops to re-submit in a week. That's my opinion, uh. Anybody else? Tell me no.
I would be happy to.
Yeah, I think we're voting on a sign, not on building condominiums.
Dick, I agree with you that.
Sorry, but I feel that you, when you get stuff that is not right, is legally given to us. And that's the way I look at it. It should be clarified and done right.
To add by square to the board.
When it comes to this approval, it's going to be approved based upon that portion, which shows the sign specifically. This dot, this last plan is not going to be recognized in the, in the decision. Because it's normally, it's tangentially relevant because it shows the site generally. So this will not be referenced in the decision. I want to reference the things that show the sign specifically.
I'm okay with that.
Binding otherwise on the board except the decision to approve the sign that's shown in the plan submitted.
If the decision that we signed, Dick, doesn't have this drawing in it, then I'm, I'm okay with it. Let me get here, what do you think? Even though we were given it tonight, we're, we can have a decision that we have to sign that doesn't have this documented. Then there's no false information presented. The board's not signing a decision on false information.
How do we know?
Because he's going to give us these.
I, I think it's going to be more than plain that the decision is for a sign because the header is going to have reference to a signed site plan review. Sign's going to be referenced several times throughout the course of the decision. Any conditions are going to be related to the sign. Any location that pertains to this will be showing the sign location. This isn't giving rise for any other purpose except for a sign, site plan permit.
I do, Kevin, from your perspective of being an assessor, I would question the assessor who's taking this document in and not looked at. So to your point, Dick, I, I wouldn't have a problem asking the assessor about, um, two thirty two, two thirty four, is that the right address?
Assessor billing for condos and they'll take care of it pretty quickly. Change the, change the tax rate on it.
Only one member and I could give us.
No, 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 Dick, you've got a good point because when I read this and I read false information that a professional engineer signed off, it irritates the hell out of me. So.
But I don't mind sign, the signage and all that, fine.
Okay.
But if this is going to be part of the document, that's where.
That's what I was saying.
And it's, it was given to us.
Day from the decision at this document.
I indicated that, I included that and I indicated that.
Done.
Not be part of the decision, it would not be represented in the decision.
Okay.
Plans reference in the decision, this plans that specifically show or otherwise reference signage.
Is this in any other part of the town?
I don't know. That's going to be, like I said, Kevin, this is an assessor's question, they need to look at that.
Would that be with part of, uh, Concom? Or could it be, who knows what? I think. I just, if it is part of anything else in town here, I don't want it overlooked.
Well, I think maybe from, I don't want to speak for the owner of the sign company. That's just, that's actually probably bit off more than she was putting on June tonight. But if you could let the, the owners know about this, they might really want to look into this.
I believe that the person indicated that she would be doing that.
Just about to say that.
Yeah.
I am going to get in contact with my client, who is the new owner of the property and also the, um, the, the surveyor, whose name is Jeremy Croto. And, and explain that his survey is incorrect and it mentions condos and that you were very, very concerned about this being incorrect. Um, when you looked at the entire survey. Um, you know, I'll be on the phone to them tomorrow to say, you know, you, you will better correct this. And like I said, am I, am I right in thinking that this is on file i- in the town, right? So it really needs to be revised and re-submitted, I guess.
Yeah, and the other thing to, to Dick's point is, a- and to John's point, if this is the wrong address on this survey title search, really, they, the, the surveyor and the professional engineer that signed this really needs to get it fixed. If it really is two forty two, that should be on this too. I mean, but, but again, you call the clerk, you get the right.
I'll give you, sir, yep.
The only request I have of you as the applicant is once you get that information from the clerk, could you please contact our town planner and make sure he's aware of that with an email?
Absolutely.
Thanks, because then, Dave, your decision will have the right information on it. Excellent, so.
Right, right.
Again, I will ask.
Will do.
Thank you. If there's any motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll do roll call vote. Norm?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Five zero. Uh, hearing closed. Now I would take a motion to approve this sign per the sign by law.
Yeah, per the plan submitted.
Per the plan submitted. On, right now, it's listed as two thirty two, two thirty four, Barry Paxton Road. And that will be futurably verified.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Still roll call. Kevin?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Five zero. Dave, we're going to rough you up for decisions in the next couple of weeks. Okay. John, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we've got another hearing. That's, uh.
Thank you, I'm signing off.
Thanks, you, thanks a lot. Thanks for our patience, your patience with us. All right, next one is, uh, supposed to be at seven thirty. It was a continuation hearing of.
Pardon me, did you say this was?
Oh, no, this is the hearing, I apologize.
What happened before was a pre-hearing.
Pre-hearing, yep. So let me read this, uh, hearing. A public hearing notice for the planning board. The board will hold a public hearing at Rutland Public Library, two eighty Main Street, Rutland, Mass. On October eleventh, twenty twenty two at seven thirty on the petition of Richard Schultz for a site plan review at one sixty three Maple Ave, parcel ID zero four zero dash B dash eleven, pursuant to the applicable site plan review requirements and the zoning, and the Rutland zoning by law, article eight agriculture accessory use. Zoning by law approved at a town meeting, June twenty seventh, twenty twenty, to allow agriculture accessory use specified in section five B, one, two, and five of the by law. For more information, contact Planning Board Office, five oh eight 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 six four one hundred, extension three zero zero one. Mr. Norm Anderson, Chairman, Rutland Planning Board. So I'd like to open up the hearing. Um, let's, I guess, Dave, the first thing I'm going to ask is I, was there any changes to the application from the initial meeting that we had last, for the last meeting?
Uh, no changes.
Okay. All right. Anybody on the board have any comments about the application or the emails that came in from their attorney for sections one, two, and five? In the supplement, there is a email from their attorney. Let me find it, I apologize.
Like you say, I didn't particularly care for that comment.
No, I.
Which one?
Um, I'll get, I just want to, if nobody else on the board, there's a comment from their attorney that I have a problem with. Because all of our other applicants, Mr. Jarvey, um, Lila, or I should say the Milk Room, Lila Kedge and Jordan Derry, all filed the same requirements and provided that document, or that, uh, response. And this applicant had their attorney saying, to the best of my knowledge, I'm not real keen on that. I want a yes or a no.
What are you, I'm just verifying exactly what you're talking about.
I'm trying to find it.
This is something that they gave us when we walked in. Got another six up in the top.
Very first one, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, here it is. From Phil Coppinger.
Cause somebody, no, I got you, um, is in, so is in compliance?
With M G O. If I'm not mistaken, I, I've got from your application, from Lila.
But it wasn't, yeah, I wrote, you know what I mean? So can the applicant write it?
Well, this is from the applicant's attorney.
Yeah.
Right.
And in essence, it is from the applicant.
So to the best of.
I'm just, I'm not good with that, that's just me. I need a yes or a no. The remaining compliance during the term, I'm fine with, but that's not telling me if you're in compliance. I guess I'll ask the rest of the board, what's your thought process on that? Maybe I'm off, I've done too many depositions and all of that.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think it was just a, you know, probably could have used a little different verbiage there as an attorney, but, uh.
Well, the other thing is it came in tonight at five nineteen after.
And this was something that was missing, obviously.
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, Dave, you'd requested it and it hadn't come in and then, did you make a call this afternoon?
Yes, I, I had further follow-up to get this information.
Thanks.
So it wasn't coming in at, due to, because I had thought last time that there was no further information needed. You know, we go back to, I remember saying checklist, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, you know, all the way right down. We don't have that yet, so if this is, I mean, I hear what you're saying. When we had this meeting last time, there was no further information needed. So if there was more information after the last meeting requested, then he got it in before the meeting, so be it.
Yep.
I mean, we didn't ask for this specifically day one.
No, this is part of the, uh, ag accessory by law, if I'm not mistaken.
I think for consistency, we're just trying to establish that the current use is an agricultural use. And that it will stay so after the site plan is created.
Yeah, and all, and from my perspective, Kevin, every applicant, yourself included, provided that. And I wanted to keep it consistent, so the next one comes in, we've got everything, all of our ducks identical, so there's no question on favorability or anything like that. So that's the only thing that I had a problem with, it said to best of my knowledge. I didn't dig that, so. I was hoping somebody was going to be here that could help me out that, yes, it is, we're fine, and then I'm good. But I don't think, I'm going to ask right now, any of you here for representation of the Schultz farm?
Well, not legal representation, but.
We support it, yeah.
We support it.
Okay.
So I guess the question now would be, is it possible to approve with a contingent new email before signature? You know what I mean? So if we get a new email that has the right verbiage on it, we can approve tonight as long as that email's in before we sign.
I'm good with that.
I mean, I think you have the representation, which is on behalf of the applicant.
Norm, any, I'm going to, I'm going to turn to you for experience. Any comments? Am I off-base with this?
Uh, I don't know, I guess, yeah, it's, it's kind of a, kind of a conundrum, but. kind of a conundrum, but I, I could see, I could see putting a condition on the approval.
I'm good with that.
And I think it's, I mean, now I think about this, it's probably this lawyer just covering his butt as a lawyer, you know what I mean? Just doing the best verbiage he could, he probably just assumed to the best of his knowledge, because every time he-
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I just want a yes or a no. Because I got it from the other three app, I shouldn't say I did, the board did, got it from the other three applicants, so I want the same thing to be consistent among what we do, because if
So.
Mr. Clark comes in or somebody like that, I want to make sure we follow the process, or the best of our ability. Three for three. So, is he, is he growing his stuff there too? That's, that's what the applicant says over-
Have you seen his thing at the end of his road? My good God. His farm stand. Frickin' vegetables, yeah. You can tell my eyes still doing it.
But I mean, it's supposed to be grown on a farmer itself, or on, en masse?
Well, it's a percentage of, you know, it all depends, it all, certain percentages of, and it can go everywhere for every little, I mean, the eggs, the this, the that, everything else that goes on there, so the product's being sold out of a store. But then, with the agricultural accessory bylaw, you know, being allowed to have music and do all those type of things, there's no guidelines on that as to what-
Oh crap. I gotta ask you. You're in this Rutland Fest on this accessory, should I? Let me ask you, or is there any inconsistencies or compliance with you, with him?
Voting?
Yeah.
You know, and I thought about that, and I thought about the past ones with, you know, Mr. Williams and McKay and Jordan and the relationships, and you and your relationship with Mr. Jordan, and my relationship with Mr. Williams, and my relationship with Mr. Clock. If he comes up, and then I buy hay from Mr. Clock, and I buy grain from Mr. Clock, it doesn't mean that, I mean, I would have to excuse myself from every single agricultural accessory bylaw that any farmer ever brings to Rutland, and so, you know what I'm saying? In theory, you're going down a slippery slope, because we're a small town, we're not 500,000 people.
No, I'm not, I'm not attacking, I'm just asking, I want to make sure, so there's no-
I, I, I've thought about it plenty, believe me, I've thought about it plenty, and, you know, I'm all about the
All right, good-
President aspect of it and everything else, but I also don't think-
I just, I thought I better ask, that's the only thing, okay.
Absolutely.
Going back to the, to the lawyer's statement, um, I don't recall exactly what your statement was, or any of the other statements, but, I mean, it seems to me that this would cover it.
But he's not. He's leaving himself a big, an out.
Well, to the best of my knowledge, I mean, it does-
Doesn't sound like a common one.
Yeah.
It just-
I, I know the, and again, I remember the answer from, from Kevin's was yes.
But I wonder if he says, because he says, and I've got no lawyers in this room, "I represent Dick Schultz, it is to the best of my knowledge as a representative of Mr. Schultz, he's in compliance."
Yeah.
You know, he, it's not saying, "I am Dick Schultz," and, you know what I mean? So because he's a representative, does that then-
He'll take a sixth word for it, kind of thing.
"I represent him," and he told me he did, so it's the best of my knowledge, he is. I mean, I think if we need to have him write a new email, he'll do that.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, I, I like Norm suggesting- Well, it's just by the time we sign the decision, it's to be-
Yeah, but I'm saying he'll have it here tomorrow morning, everything.
So what is it, you want to get it from?
I guess, Dave, what, to, to Norm and Kevin's suggestion, I would suggest we contact Mr. Coppinger and say, "The board is, is looking for a definite yes." And I don't want to say Dick Schultz, but the, uh, um, farm, um, is in compliance with Mass General Law Sections 48, I'm sorry, uh, Chapter 40A, Section 3. We need a yes. We don't need him, "To the best of my knowledge," and if that's him contacting Dick and saying, "Yes, I've spoke with the applicant, and it's a yes," then I'm good. That's, that's my opinion, and I think the board would be, at least some of us, would be more comfortable with that. Yes.
Yeah, you're right, yep.
So-
Sound positive.
A- and I have, me personally, um, Norm, you can tell me how you're feeling, is, I, I like your, I like your suggestion. We can, we can conditionally approve this tonight with that email being gotten to us.
I, I don't really have a problem with that, my big problem is, it sounds like lawyers just didn't do this job.
Yeah, I think this, I, I think when Dave called him this afternoon, or spoke with him this afternoon, it reminded him like, "Ooh, I haven't done this." So this is the get out of jail free card. Again, this is my opinion, I don't know what the lawyer wrote, but he didn't have all the information. I think if we get him to do that, and tell him we need it as part of the closing package, I think he'll hopefully contact Mr. Schultz and get this answered, and we're done. So. And other than that, is there any other comments that the board had? Because that was my biggest concern, because the package I looked over, I mean, I, I'm fine with it. Um, the parking issue, I'm leaving that, I'm not gonna get into that. So I don't, I don't think there's enough parking space for what they're planning to do, but that's the board of health's problem, not mine.
I'll copy what I need and whatever.
Just, I, I don't think what they have right now will accommodate 1,000 people or more up there with parking and, and bathroom facilities.
You're gonna have that many people come in?
Who knows how it's gonna come for Rut, Rut Fest?
That's gonna tip-
We have 10, we have 10,000 people show up for the 4th of July this year, or thereabouts.
That's gonna tip Rutland in the wrong direction.
Yeah, I think it's good, I just want to make, you know, it's not my concern, that's why I don't bring it up as part of the application. Because he's provided parking as part of the application, and, um, if it's not adequate, that's-
I'll tell you, if there's 1,000 people, that'd be one hell of a party. Not gonna be a bad thing, believe me, it will be all right, we'll get it figured out.
Okay.
That'll be one hell of a party.
Is, I guess, uh, I'll ask the board, and Norm, if you've got any comments, please jump in. Okay? All right, after that, I will move out to the public. Any comments? Questions, concerns?
Appreciate the support.
Okay.
One more thing to do, I want to-
Good with that. So, that being said, um, I guess the next step is to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Aye, second.
Any discussion? All right, let's take a vote, uh, roll call. Norm?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim, aye. Five zero, close the hearing. Now, this is where I'm not sure, Dave, of how to work, what, how we want to word this, is just basically, we're looking for site plan approval of Section 5B of the Rutland Agricultural Accessory Bylaw. I'm sorry. Section 5B, 1, 2, and 5.
That's correct, you want to cite the specific uses within that section, that's right.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion to somewhat what I said?
I'm a little bit, you know, outside.
All right, um, any seconds?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, I like this. And for the second time, is there any discussion for the second time? Okay, good enough.
Not tonight.
This is not a special permit, so if I'm not mistaken, Dave, it's just three out of five?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, we'll go for a roll call vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Tim, aye. And, uh, I'd like, oh, I should, I, uh, how do I undo that? Because I need to put that condition in that.
I think we captured the gist of it, so you, this is preferable, subject to the condition of getting a definitive statement as to the use.
Okay, if everybody's okay with that?
Yep, okay with that.
Norm, are you okay with that? Make sure that condition's in there. Dick, are you okay?
Yes.
Excellent, all right. All right. Um, we've covered Bryce Lemon, 1 and 2. Smoke if you got them, thanks for coming, we appreciate it. We're looking for people on the bylaw subcommittee, so if you're open to joining and helping out the town-
I already put my name in for the Economic Development Committee, so.
Uh, hey, Dick, that would be the alternate to the RDIC. Getting started? Okay, let's talk, um, Dave, uh-
Hey, Tim, I just have one quick question.
Yes, Sean, go ahead.
Um, are we still gonna talk about the HOA and all that stuff tonight? For Bryce Lemon?
Um-
What, it, it isn't on here, is it?
It's not on here, that's the problem.
Wasn't it supposed to?
I know, I know you guys brought it up the last meeting.
I thought it was supposed to be- Yeah, we talked about it, and, uh, we needed to get, get them on board.
Sean, let, let's get, we have a, uh, if I'm not mistaken, a section that we can say unanticipated.
Well, if you want to go back to Bryce Lemon, the state subdivision-
I'm, I'm fine with that right now, let's do it.
Would probably encompass it.
Let's do it.
Well, we're, are we on number seven now?
Uh, we, we actually finished it up, but we can go back to that, let's go to seven.
Go back to seven.
What was the question that did-
HOA.
HOA on Bryce Lemon, he wanted to talk about that, and we, we discussed it last meeting about, you know, the, the monies, the passbook that Cle has, how's that getting turned over?
Yeah.
And, uh, timeframe and all that, so. Sean, go ahead and ask your question, and we'll try to answer.
So, from what I got from the last meeting, watching the video online, is, again, things we brought up over a year ago, not being notified, trying to get a fence around, attention bond, the town, the question being that, how can homeowners be in charge of a storm drain system when the town's trying to go for MS4, its state's in there? Um, hold on, let me just pull it up here. For the stormwater management, if I can find, the thing I say here, on the town website, through DBW, they have some of their information on there. And, just trying to pull up my notes here. Basically saying that they're gonna be in charge of any and all stormwater structures in the town, for lack of a better term. How do we get put with it, even though they say they're gonna be in charge of it, and they're putting it on their MS4 application, saying they are gonna be in charge, but?
This is if I had Director Buckley here, I could ask that question. I don't have an answer for that.
Perhaps that is a question for Director Buckley, but not necessarily a question for the planning board.
No, yeah, Sean, is there any chance that, um, you could get an email to Director Buckley about that, and ask him, "Because you're in an HOA at, um, Bryce Lemon?"
He, he, over a year ago, when I started talking about this, he directed me to you guys, because you put us in charge of it. He said, "There's nothing I can do with it." But, right on the town website, um, under the DBW and their stormwater management section, uh, item 19, the term municipal separate stormwater sewer system, or municipal storm drain system, refers to collecting and conveying storm water in any drainage system, street, curb, inlet, pipe, storm drain, pumping facility, retention, or detention basin, owned or operated within the town.
Or if you like, I may suggest that, perhaps you would like to have Mr. Buckley here, you could all killtops on it, the agenda for the next meeting, to answer any questions related to this.
Sean, is there any chance you could hold that question? Because we're trying to get Director Buckley here for the next planning board meeting, and I guess I'd, I'd request that we put that on the agenda for Bryce Lemon. HOA and storm drain, with storm drain questions. Because I don't want to take a stab at this, because this is out of my purview, and my knowledge, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to speak for the board, I don't think anybody here wants to take a shot at this.
No.
Unless, Norm, unless you want to take a shot at this?
I, at this time, I don't, but for our next meeting, uh, I, I guess, I'm getting, uh, a little bit frustrated with this whole HOA thing. And to be perfectly honest with you, yeah, we probably need Joe Buckley here. To be perfectly honest with you, I would like a town council here, because, uh, I am very, very disturbed with the process of the creation of the HOA, the transfer of the HOA-
The handling of the funds.
The notification to the home buyers.
Yep.
I would like, from town council, a detailed, blow-by-blow explanation regarding homeowners association, all the way from purchasing and sales of a home in a subdivision, all the way through the entire closing process, who is notified of what, when, and by what means.
Norm, it, would that be a good, excuse me, quick, Sean, would that be a good thing, would that be a good option for Dave to send that to Shirin or whoever, or, and, and-
Amy.
Amy, and have them prepare that, and then do a presentation to us at the next, uh, planning board meeting?
That sounds like a plan to me.
There we go, there's the plan.
I think, I mean, I can set the table and identify what the big request is, and then if that, if that attorney's available, then he can come in and answer the board's specific questions and work you till then.
Yeah, I just think if they had like a little presentation on how it goes through, and, you know, like, to, Norm had, uh, all good points from start to finish.
Shouldn't Cle be here too, as he's the one that creates the HOAs?
I think we-
Does Cle's firm actually create them? Or the builder's firm, or whoever the builder is, I don't want to say, I don't want to be specific. Whoever the builder is, is gonna actually create the HOAs.
I'd like first, and this is my opinion, to, to have Amy do her presentation, so we understand the big picture of how it happens, and then we can get specific into Bryce Lemon.
Right, I think that's good idea.
I think her presentation would be pretty much, excuse me, sir, I'm-
Yep, yeah, no problem.
Go ahead.
I think her presentation, you're not looking for like a PowerPoint, I, or you're just looking for her to be able to have a general discussion.
Yeah, I mean, if she had some, like, uh, uh, not a PowerPoint, but a couple pages of, you know, what I call an outline, I don't need details, just give us an outline of how to talk and, and some points. Definitions, yeah.
It's an HOA versus a condo administration versus a, you know, these may typically be this and this.
And what the hell are we doing with it now, and, and the past, we never had them before, so.
I can see what she has. At least she'll have a generalized understanding of what the big topic, topic is.
You could even send her what we've got, is what we're doing right, is, do we need to be more detailed? Does she have any suggestions?
Well, the board doesn't create the homeowners association agreement, that's a private document between the developer and the residents of the subdivision.
But why all of a sudden, you know, in, in subdivisions before, there was no HOAs? And now, all of a sudden, there is?
Well, that comes in-
The, the-
From the open space special permit, part of the zoning bylaw, which requires some form of ownership of the common areas, one possible way is a homeowners association. So that's something that this board or the town, through the town meeting, decided to put into its open space special permit.
Dick, in the past, and you and Norm can say this, most of the time, what I can remember from Cle and Lenny, they retained control, like, uh, at the two, I call them Boulder Hills over there, they retained control of the open space, um, until, until they put it in the deeds for like 1/96 of, of peoples, you know, they own it.
Yeah, it was different, and I remember, getting back to my assessor days, there was abatements filed for hundreds of pieces of property, which-
They were like about that big.
Right, all the cul-de-sacs up at the end of, they were all owned by Mr. Blair or by whatever. He's saying, "I don't want to pay the $14 in tax."
It wasn't Blair, it's much of a-
Lenny did that too.
Lenny is the one, that, he's, he screwed it up.
And they'd leave a bunch of strips behind the house, and then they'd say, "Oh, I own the land behind there, no housing," but then 10 feet behind that, there'd be a house, so there was a bunch of those pieces of land.
And we kept on asking Cle for, you know, turn the property over to the town, and I believe there was a, on Noble Hill, there's a piece up there, they're supposed to have a rec area.
I forgot about that recision.
It's a rec area up there anyways, that we wanted, wanted to be able to have groups get together, have baseball games and stuff like that up there. And he's supposed to build a field.
Sean-
Whoever went to the town, or who went, I don't know.
Just a second.
But, uh, anyways, go ahead.
No, no, Dick, I like that, but that's something that, uh-
But if we, if we get back into the subdivision rules and regulations and open space, and says it will no longer be there, it has to go to the town.
Or, or left to the builder, because they're-
Or left to a, a-
If I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, there were three options.
Land Conservancy.
It was the builder, um, to the individual house owners, or to an HOA.
Yep.
I thought there was three, no, no, there were three.
To the Land Conservancy, or the town.
And then, uh, but the builder could retain it, and then the HOA got added.
It could retain it, but never build on it.
Correct, correct.
Well, are you finished?
Yep.
I was just gonna say-
Kick me, please, you had to do it. Kick me.
I know. Just gonna say, we could talk about this later.
Yeah, I think, Sean, are you, are you okay with, uh, holding on to your questions until our next meeting, so we can get more in-depth into this?
Yeah, and I just, a couple other ones, maybe you guys can reach out quicker than I can, has it been turned over?
Yeah, it's a-
To the homeowners?
It had, it had to be-
As far as I know, Cle is still, still a homeowner in the association.
After so many house lots are sold?
Seventy-five percent, I thought it was.
Seventy-five percent of the total subdivision, and/or three years have gone by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I believe the three years have gone by, and therefore, it should have been turned over.
Yeah, as far as I know, and Norm and/or Dave can tell me, I don't think there's been an official turnover that I know of, hasn't been any documentation come our way saying that, so.
I mean, Cle, Cle is still a homeowner slash property owner within the development, so I mean, he can retain it and do what he wants with it.
Yeah, he has the passbook with the monies. Norm, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, this is one of the problems we have, we have no idea of what the communication is, and what the process is.
Yeah. That's hopefully Norm, Amy will help us out.
The only way I found about it, sorry, the only way I found out about it was through my title search on my house, after it came back after I closed, in my closing documents, it said, "Part of Homeowners Association Trust," and I said, "What is that?" I never agreed to any of that, never saw any documentation on it.
Oh, it was in the purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah, so this is, and Sean, this is a good conversation, because we're learning more and more as a board, but not blaming anybody, well, except for maybe your attorneys, because your lawyers, or whoever's lawyers, it's in there, it is all in there, and we see people kind of, you know, they read things fast, whatever else, so attorneys should be a little more, a little more detailed.
I had my attorney go back through, I had my attorney go back through my purchase and sale agreement, and all my documentation, and there is nothing in there, other than on the title search.
Well, that would be interesting to bring that.
I, I, I have my documentation and my emails with my attorney stating that.
Well, ask the attorney if, well, you know what, we're getting stuff, I like, Marilyn needs a KB.
We're totally going down a legal thing that we don't know.
Bring the material.
It's really good conversation, keep it all, keep it going, keep, keep your research going, and come back to us.
Yeah, on the next meeting, so, all right, I, uh, I want to pass on, Sean, again, thanks for coming, and, like I said, we're gonna shoot for next meeting to have, like Norm asked for an attorney, and Director Buckley there to ask those questions, it'll be on the agenda. Let's move, anything else on Bryce Lemon, before we move on to Brittenell Estates? All right, I do not see anything, even in this, maybe I'm missing it, there was nothing, Dave from Brittenell Estates with an update, is that correct?
October 3rd.
Did I miss something?
Yeah, you got Brittenell Estates, October 3rd is an update.
I apologize, I missed that.
And I didn't get a chance to ask Carl, and he has a portion of the southern block retaining wall needs to be removed, because the northern section and the southern section were constructed too close, and so, and the arch culvert will not fit between the sections, does this, and I wrote here, does this picture show this?
Oh, I got it, sorry.
Anyways.
And, and here goes my, uh, you know where I'm going with this, where's instructional engineers review and report on this?
Yep.
So, I'm, I'm about, somebody's gonna have to grab my feet, like they're gonna do decks eventually, I'm getting tired of this, they're supposed to be out there, instructional, anybody can tell me if I'm wrong, supposed to be following this?
Yes.
And sending us reports, it's not happening. So, I guess, if, I'll, I'll take my opinion, and anybody can jump in, is we need to send a strong letter to Mr. Blair.
Stating that fines will start next week, if he doesn't get the reforcing. I did.
Is that, um, I don't know, Norm, Dick, Kevin, Marilyn, I'm looking for some strongly suggest.
Tim?
Yep.
You know, I, I would suggest that at this point, we could kind of write a nasty letter, saying that we are not getting timely reports from the engineer who is inspecting it, and that we are, uh, we, we intend to require weekly reports, because he's constructing, he's working on this thing now, he needs to get this before frost, so we need weekly reports, and even, I'll, I'll go with, include a threat that we might, if we don't get them, we might order a cease and desist.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Dave, can you?
Good point.
Norm, I appreciate that, because I'm livid, I mean, we're trying to work with, with, uh, Mr. Blair and his, his team to get this done, so, the ultimate goal is to get that road out to Brittenell, but I want it built safely, correctly, and to the plans, and if I'm not mistaken, and the board can tell, I don't think we have any plans for this, this second crossing yet, am I wrong? Dave, do you know if I'm?
I think the board has asked us before, and the information was passed on to the applicant.
And we still don't have anything, correct, did you know of? All right, so, I think, Norm, part of that letter is, you're building something without any oversight from any planning board member, that cease and desist is probably closer than it should be, I'm just frustrated, I'm, I'm livid that something's being built, and we have no drawings, we can't follow anything, we couldn't even hire our own structural engineer right now to look at it, because we've got nothing to give them. Just, yeah, I think, I think I need to calm down, and let, let what Norm said is a, is a good suggestion, Dave, to get that letter to Cle.
And like I say, which way's north and which way's south?
Well, I see the, the yellow light, the red light, and the blue light, but I don't see the green light, for go. Sorry.
No, they're goofing off.
Must be mine.
Yeah, I'm-
Now, I think if you're sitting over there looking in that direction, you're sort of looking out towards Boston, in my opinion.
Yeah, because I think behind them is, is where Bear Hill is.
Yes.
They're just waiting for the concrete to dry.
Yeah, well, honestly, this, this report by Carl is, is serious, I just, and this went to Mr. Blair, correct, yeah, Tom Larson, Cle and File, okay, I think that's enough said, I don't want to get more wound up, Kevin, you got anything, or?
No, I just, you guys have been doing this longer than me, and, yeah, you're right, how was this even happened, there's no plans, there's no nothing, you're just building it.
Yeah.
Going ahead, and it was supposed to be.
I mean, their engineer, I've spoke with, and listened to, and had Director Buckley speak with, their engineer is beyond competent, he's, he's a phenomenal engineer, but we're not getting what he's building, or it's not being funneled to Dave to get to the board, and that's where my heartache is right now. Okay, enough said, I don't want to belittle this, anything else on here, sewer provisions of the plan, some of the outstanding comments have not been resolved.
Still haven't been resolved.
I guess, to Norm's point, we probably should put in that letter, Dave, to Cle, that we're, we're getting frustrated with the lack of response from his reports, and-
We need to have fines.
Yeah, we can't, that's, we can't find anybody, unless we put it in the orders of condition, now, all we can do is, what Norm said, we can ask the building inspector to put a cease and desist on, on the road, we can't do anything with houses, but we can do it on the road.
On the road.
Yeah, but then there's the flip side, we wanted to get out to Brittenell, but-
I know, but boy, he would, Bear Hill too, he wouldn't be able to put anybody in the houses.
Arrowhead would be, would be built, but couldn't do it, so, okay, let's keep going. Number nine, did I miss something on that one, because I saw ten as the next one?
No reports for here.
Okay, let's go to, um, ten, Marilyn, all right, I won't kick it, because I'm gonna let you talk, I'm gonna shut that off.
The planning board will be discussing the third category of types of, uh, categories of the new bylaw, and it would concerns large parcels of land and larger businesses, and we also have a new member who's interested in joining, he's been coming to the meetings.
Another ten minutes, I just kicked one over there. So, here, no, she's got one.
I got it, um, his name is Tim, um-
Gibbons.
Gibbons, and he has quite a resume attached here, I think he would be an excellent addition to the board, and he has also made some comments from the gallery that has been, been, you know, right on target with what we're talking about.
And to add, Marilyn, I was at the last meeting, finally made it, and I was thoroughly impressed with this gentleman. In fact, I tried recruiting him for future planning, planning board member.
I think we better than you all, though.
Yeah, just get him on your board, and get him, yeah, I, I think he'd be a good addition, I agree with you.
So do, Marilyn, want to make a motion?
Well, I would like to, yeah, I just, I mean, I'm not, you know, me and this thing, this committee didn't really go so well for me over the last couple of years, I definitely was not welcomed there, I don't feel as though I was ever, um, allowed to talk or anything else, so my concern with this is, one, this is the gentleman that is extremely opposed, and was extremely verbal against rezoning of his backyard, so now you're putting somebody on the committee that is, lives in an area that the committee is trying to potentially rezone, and he's adamantly against that.
Well, I wouldn't say adamant, because he's come up with a few ideas.
He was, everything I heard him say, months ago, he was adamantly against that, so would he be recusing himself from any of those?
Probably, anything to do with that particular-
Property.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that would be more than out of it, because as in a butter, like, like Norm with Hilltop Estates.
But isn't that piece of property a big?
It's eighty acres, is what they were like.
It's a big piece of what the town's trying to redevelop, potentially into his own.
We're coming down to, well, not that part of it, we're, we're trying to come with the terminology for the different sized areas.
We haven't, we're not really addressing that piece of property.
Anymore?
No, not at this point in time.
So that's my concern, is if it ever does, I mean, that was-
I mean, if we do, um, I think that having people on the board that represent different ideas is not necessarily a bad thing.
I, Kevin, the one thing I liked about him, and again, it was just the one meeting, I'm usually pretty good at picking apart people, is I, at least from my being there, is I didn't think he had an agenda, I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, but I didn't think he had an agenda, and that's what I liked about him, and the fact that, that eighty acres isn't coming up, gotta get through the home occupancy one, that's the big thing to get through, really wanted to get that for the, um, coming up meeting, but I don't know if it will get there.
It's not gonna make that.
Yeah, I didn't think so either, the warrant's gonna close in two days, so, but we'll have one at least done.
Yeah.
Um, I, I believe that I would have him recuse himself if, when that eighty acres came up, but there's more to come up after that, I mean, we've got a few bylaws that we need to adjust and get through, and I think he'd be a good addition, again, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have any, I mean, again, you guys, I've said it a million times, you guys didn't want me on the board, so now you're gonna bring him on, and that's fine, but, I mean, I wasn't welcome there at all, so hopefully you guys welcome him more than you welcomed me.
Well, I, I don't mind you coming at all, and being, because you are on the planning board, you have a right to be there, so.
Not if, not, I tried, I made a valiant effort, I mean, you know, we can go, we can go around this and around this, and around this, you guys kept me out of the, out of the, the board for a year, I was not informed, ever, that I was even on the board, nobody ever said a word to me, I missed multiple meetings.
No, you didn't miss meetings, because we didn't meet.
You didn't meet for twelve months.
Correct.
Over twelve, then why did it say that I was absent in the notes, and then the only reason that I knew I was on the board is because I read the minutes.
Read the minutes, and such a-
From a meeting, and I was absent, and I said, I was supposed to be there, nobody told me I was supposed to be, I was never invited or even informed.
That wasn't, that could be the first meeting that we, we had had.
Yeah, maybe, but, you know, here we are, almost two years later, it would have been nice if you had, I tried to talk with you guys about this, I've tried to, you guys have refused any conversation, so I am adamantly against bringing another member on, because I wasn't allowed to be on there, so why would you bring more people in, when you weren't even welcome to me?
Let me ask Marilyn this, because I'm a, I'm a person that likes new beginnings, because I'm starting one at EverSource after thirty years, Kevin, would it, would it hurt to come back, and let's, let's, let's have a do-over, and try to start from the beginning?
I mean, now with two days left on the warrant, I mean, it's kind of a moot point, if this maybe the next year?
The only thing that's gonna go on the, the only thing that's going on the warrant is, basically, we're, we're cleaning up the, um, one twenty-two, because we put that for the modles, for the repair motorcycle, was on the town center district, and we inadvertently made a mistake and didn't include in the village district, so we're correcting that mistake, but that, to me, that's more of a verbiage mistake than a, than a solid, the one that really is, is being worked on right now, Marilyn and the group, I haven't been too much involved, I should have been, but it, is the home occupancy one, which we really need to get cleaned up, because that, it's, there were a lot of, in my opinion, deficiencies in this group, from the one time I've been there, because I'm the same you, I miss too much because of work and other commitments, um, they've done a good job, and that's why I, me personally, I, I didn't invite you back, because I've only been there once, I thought it was a, a good session, a good addition.
Well, I was originally very much looking forward to it all, but, I mean, I, so, and that's just how I feel at this point, I don't, I think that if we're looking for another member, then this should be, just because one person raises their hand, if, well, it says that we were looking for a member.
We're actually looking for many, because is Bonnie, is she?
She showed up.
I think she's gonna be coming, but I mean, it's very, uh, it's not particularly your seat that he'll be taking, you know, he was-
So have we reached out to?
Yeah, the town's been doing that, it's been listed.
This is the first I've heard of it.
It's been on the town, it's been, if I'm not mistaken, man, it's been on the town website as an open position with five or six other committees that need people too, and it's just-
I believe that is.
And who the hell reads that?
That's, that's the key, and getting, getting volunteers these days is almost next to impossible.
Well, I could think of people that would want to be on this, very much, that's all I'm playing, so.
Please, I don't want to speak to you, but get them.
Yeah, and I don't think all these people know that there's openings, I'm not saying that we haven't done what we can do, but if it's just listed on the website, then how?
That's it, yeah.
Who's gonna go on the website and, oh, you know what, I want to join a committee today, it doesn't happen, nobody's gonna go to the website, so, that's all I look at.
The select board's been also promoting it occasionally in their meetings about people-
For the bylaw subcommittees.
Well, also, they've, they've come up with the ones that are open, I know that, because I've been in a couple of their meetings, but, I don't specifically remember them coming out in the last couple of meetings and mentioning anything about it, but, to Mika, that probably wouldn't be a, a bad thing to mention to the select board of spending five minutes and going over open committee positions, so, that's it.
I promoted it on the town administrators Facebook page, and that's how we got interested in someone for the economic development commission.
Excellent.
I mean, I guess it works, but I just, I don't know.
Speaking as the chairman, or speaking personally, anytime that you want to come back to the committee, certainly welcome.
Well, the one thing is, your sheet's open all the time.
You say it now, but, you know, we're not gonna go, I'm not splitting hairs here, with you told me to stop talking, and I went back, and you've never said a word to me since, so how can you say you're welcome?
All right, I make an offer to-
I don't want to argue with you.
Lieutenant Gibson to be part of our bylaw subcommittee.
I don't think we should just be voting people on randomly, he was, he was adamantly against the major home occupation, he had a directive in this hearing that there was He had a directive in this hearing that there was two hundred and something people from our town that came and he was the one person against it all.
Wow.
And now you're putting him on there to.
But because of the credentials and the fact that he's been to every one of our meetings.
And he also, I mean, he's.
Attributed a few things too.
And I guess I just get confused about this, because I was also told that we didn't want the public in those meetings.
No, no, that's not true.
One hundred percent, because I actually invited Mark Sinkovich and I got told by Mr., I got told by many people in the beginning stages, the bylaw subcommittee does its own thing and then we reach out to the public. I was told that very specifically, now you're saying he's been.
Mark was there.
He was there for a couple, but he wasn't supposed to be.
No, that's not true, they're open meetings. Okay.
I was told very specifically that the bylaw subcommittee does not like to start its meetings and go through things with the public there. They like to do things in the committee and then they reach out to the public. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but yeah, he's been at every single meeting and, but if.
Well, you know.
I told other people that they're not supposed to be going in, other people that were showing up to meetings after you told me not to, I said, they don't want people there.
After I told you that we didn't want people in the meeting.
In the beginning stages of the meetings.
But I made a motion.
The public, see, here we go. Here we go, I don't even get to talk. Have a good night.
Good night.
Motion, no, not voting for it, I don't think that, no. Thank you for the interruption.
Second. Need to discuss.
You just gotta stop, give me a minute. Give me thirty seconds.
I was very impressed with his credentials in there, or what his.
I'm, okay. Yes, okay, I gotta compose myself, my German Scottish temper is about ready to blow up, I gotta stop it, because I'm tired of this. I'm really tired of it.
Take a deep breath.
Okay, thanks, Norm, because I don't wanna AFib out, because then you're back being chairman and I'm done. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to appoint Tim Gibbons to the bylaw subcommittee. Um, any discussion?
Gibson.
G I B S O.
Is it Gibson?
Gibson.
Okay, I apologize.
I know, I think I missed, uh, spoke.
I just wanna ask one question as a discussion point, Dave, you've been to these meetings, I haven't. I, again, am a pretty good judge of character, not always perfect, but good, but I thought this guy would be a, a great addition to the bylaw subcommittee. Is that an opinion that you can hold, um?
Uh, staff on behalf of the board requested that, the applicant provided a letter of interest as well as some credentials, the applicant's provided that information, it's in your packet. I believe this is the board's decision to make.
Ah, give me an opinion, I hate that when he does that to me. Norm, what's your opinion?
Uh. Well, obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm bothered by, you know, what just happened in the past five minutes or so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, very, very much so, and, uh, as far as, you know, Kevin's opinion of, of Mr. Gibson, uh, I, I don't think there's any doubt, he, he was opposed to, you know, that particular zoning change, it was not eighty acres. The zoning our proposal was like twelve hundred acres.
Oh, I apologize, and I was wrong, yeah. I just remember it was huge, maybe it was eight miles of road. It was huge.
And, uh, at, at least to my way of thinking, that kind of a zoning change was pretty much absurd.
Yeah. It's unmanageable, Norm, there's no way to do that.
I, I guess, for someone to be opposed to something like that, yeah, okay, maybe he has some personal reasons. Uh, or, or, you know, e, even conflict reasons, but, you know, it, it's just, the idea was beyond reasonable. So, uh, and, I, I guess the other thing I, I do wanna, I do wanna confirm, and Kevin did get it right, that at least for the history of the bylaw subcommittee, we have always started our work as a committee, we don't prevent anyone from coming to the meetings, but we pretty much contain our discussions to within the committee members. Once we have a foundation laid, then we feel it's time to start, you know, expanding our outreach and looking to, I'll say, the general public or any other interested parties for their input. That's a process. Okay, and, and I, and I don't want to cast any kind of aspersions, but there was one person that just didn't seem to think that that was a decent process.
Okay. I thought the public was always invited, if they wanted to give their opinion, they could, but giving, and, and I agree with you, Norm, I, I just, giving an opinion on something that hasn't been formed is sort of difficult. If you haven't, if you haven't got a solid basis to talk about, how can you have an opinion?
Yeah, and, and a person would, would certainly, I could give an opinion, but not become necessarily an intimate part of the discussion.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the way I can phrase that.
Okay.
When you look at that screen, there was about four or five norms went up the pictures of you.
I'm, uh, I don't have any other discussion points, I just wanted to see what Norm had to say, and I'll rough up Dave outside. No, that's okay, you, you're right, it's, it's a board decision, I agree. I just was trying to get a feel, because like I said, Marilyn, I thought I was impressed with his non-agenda, his input, his overall adding to the conversation and to helping out with, uh, sort of forming, uh.
I don't think he has the ability to, uh, as you were saying when he interrupted you, to kind of come to the, the, I can't think of the word I want, but the, um, the crux of what our discussion is, you know, we're bringing us back to.
Yeah, I liked it, I did, so, if there's no other discussion, I will ask, uh, for a vote to have Mr. Tim Gibson put on the bylaw subcommittee. Marilyn?
Nope.
I'm.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking for a motion.
No, no, we got the motion second, this is gonna ask for a vote. You need to get some sleep, young lady.
Yeah.
Um, Marilyn?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Norm?
Aye.
Tim, aye, four zero. And I'd like to make a, a note at, uh, nine forty-three, Mr. Jarvie exited the meeting before it was closed. I'll put that on the record.
And may I ask what time it is right now?
Nine forty-five.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, before you do that, I could, you look, we have the meeting next Wednesday?
Um.
I think it's an ag con meeting.
This one, an ag con on Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
I would prefer Wednesday, because I'm having some tests that involve ant seizure on Wednesday.
Just wanted to just check.
Propanol, number one.
Huh?
Propanol, number one.
Sorry.
That's okay, I made the motion to adjourn.
So you, will you be able to come on Wednesday?
I'll make it, uh, um, let's see, next Wednesday. Let me check the, the God, the God book. Hopefully I've got nothing. Well, nothing's scheduled right now, so on October nineteenth, I am clear, is it six or six thirty?
Six thirty, we've been.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, that's even better, it gives me time to get out of Southborough and get, get back here, so yes, I'm making two meetings, damn it. All right, so that was a four oh meeting, the Dick had, I'm sorry, Dick had a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna second it, unlike a chairman should be doing, and let's vote, Norm?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tim, aye. Norm, you gotta feel better.